Oh, David here, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board and apologize for our late start. This is the second of two public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the rent stabilization law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Christina DeRose. Christina? Not currently present. Robert Erlich.
Here.
Sheila Garcia.
Present.
Christian Gonzalez Rivera.
Present.
Leah Goodrich.
Present.
Cecilia Hossa.
Present.
Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Scott Walsh.
Present.
David Reese. Present. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The final vote will take place virtually on Wednesday, June 23rd, starting at 7:00 PM. The public may watch the vote by streaming it on the RGB's YouTube channel or by listening to it over the phone. To view out, to find out how, visit the RGB website, nyc.gov/rgb, or call the RGB at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. I'd like to thank you for all attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Before we proceed with testimony, I would like to go over roles and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. We will begin with speakers who registered in advance. We will alternate between tenants, owners, and public officials with a speaking limit of two minutes per person. If there is time at the end of the hearing, we will then hear from unregistered speakers on a first come, first served basis. We will explain how to do that after all registered speakers have spoken. When it is your turn to speak, a staff member will promote you from an attendee to a panelist, and you will have the ability to speak and to display your video if you so choose. Please wait for your name to be announced before you commence your testimony. If you are attending the Zoom hearing with a name or phone number that differs from the name or phone number you registered with, we will not be able to identify you, and you may lose your place in the queue. If you are not an attendee of the hearing, at the time your name is called, you will also lose your place in the queue. A two-minute timer will begin and will be displayed periodically during your testimony. At the conclusion of your testimony, you will become an attendee again without speaking privileges as we move on to our next speaker. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. To listen to testimony in Spanish, please use the interpretation button in Zoom to choose the appropriate channel. For English speakers, select the English channel to hear English speakers as well as Spanish speakers interpreting to English. If you do not choose an interpretation channel, you will hear all testimony in the native language of the speaker. If you are using the Zoom app on a smartphone, you may find the interpretation button by pressing the more button. If you would like to listen to a hearing with simultaneous interpretation in Spanish and do not have access to the Zoom app or either a mobile device or a computer, you may do so by calling 646-558-8656, then entering meeting ID 872-8890-3885, then when prompted for participant ID, pressing pound, then when prompted, enter passcode 139724. If you are listening to the Spanish translation by telephone and plan to testify during the hearings, you will have to switch over to the main webinar to testify. Interpreters in the main hearing will translate your testimony for the board. Before it is your turn to speak, call 646-558-8656, then enter meeting ID 84907708770, when prompted for participant ID, pressing pound, then when prompted, enter passcode 848480. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to join us and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. Please note that we are also taking comments on the proposed guidelines outside of this hearing. Testimony must be submitted no later than midnight tonight to ensure that it gets to members of the board prior to our final vote. You can find information on submitting testimony on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or you can leave audio testimony by calling 929-256-5472. We thank you for your cooperation.
Buenas tardes a todos. Estos serán anuncios para la audiencia pública del 17 de junio de 2021. Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la Junta de Normas del Alquiler de Nueva York. Esta será la segunda de las dos audiencias públicas que tomaré en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lofts, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres de 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1er de octubre de 2021 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2022. Ahora pasaré lista. Por favor, responda si está presente. Christina DeRose. No ha llegado. Robert Erlich. Presente. Sheila Garcia. Presente. Cristian Gonzalez Rivera. Presente. Leah Goodrich. Presente. Cecilia Hossa. Presente. Alex Schwartz. Presente. Scott Walsh. Presente. David Reese. Presente. Que conste en actas que existe un quorum. La votación final se llevará a cabo virtualmente el miércoles 23 de junio a partir de las siete de la noche. El público puede ver la votación al sintonizar el canal de YouTube de RGB o al escuchar por teléfono. Para saber cómo hacerlo, visite el sitio web de rgbnyc.gov/rgb o llame al RGB al 212-669-7480 entre las nueve y cinco de la tarde. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La Junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus opiniones sobre los ajustes propuestos a las normas de alquiler. Antes de continuar con su declaración, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para los que deseen declarar ante la Junta. Empezaremos con oradores que se inscribieron por adelantado. Alternaremos entre inquilinos, propietarios, y funcionarios públicos, y cada persona dispondrá de dos minutos para declarar. Si hay tiempo al final de la audiencia, escucharemos a los oradores no inscritos por orden de llegada. Explicaremos cómo hacer esto después de que todos los oradores inscritos hayan declarado. Cuando sea su turno de hablar, un miembro del personal le promoverá de asistente a panelista y podrá hablar y mostrar su video si así lo desea. Espera que se anuncie su nombre antes de empezar con su declaración. Si asiste a la audiencia de Zoom con un número o número de nombre o número de teléfono diferente del nombre o número de teléfono con el que usted se inscribió, no podremos identificarle y es posible que pierda su lugar en la fila. Si no es asistente de la audiencia en el momento en que se llame su nombre, también podría perder su lugar en la fila. Usaremos un reloj para marcar los dos minutos y lo mostraremos de vez en cuando durante su declaración. Una vez concluida su declaración, dejará de ser panelista y volverá a ser participante sin privilegios de hablar. Después pasaremos a nuestro próximo orador. Hoy contamos con intérpretes de español. Para escuchar las declaraciones en español, use el botón de interpretación en Zoom para elegir el canal correspondiente. Para hablantes de inglés, seleccione el canal en inglés para escuchar a los oradores de inglés. Así como los oradores de español también deben elegir el canal correspondiente. Si usted no elige un canal de interpretación, escuchará todo el testimonio en el idioma nativo del declarante. Si está utilizando la aplicación Zoom en un teléfono inteligente, puede encontrar el botón de interpretación al presionar el botón more, more, o más en español. Si desea escuchar la audiencia con interpretación simultánea en español y no tiene acceso a la aplicación Zoom en su teléfono móvil o en su computadora, puede hacerlo al llamar Y después ingrese el número de identificación de la reunión, que será el 872-8890-3885. Cuando se le solicita el número de identificación de participante, por favor, presione la tecla de numeración, y cuando se le solicite, ingrese la contraseña 139724. Si está escuchando la interpretación al español por teléfono y piensa declarar durante las audiencias, tendrá que pasar al seminario web principal para hacerlo. Los intérpretes de la audiencia principal interpretarán su declaración ante la Junta. Antes de que sea su turno de hablar, llame el 646-558-8656. Y luego ingrese el número de identificación de la reunión, el cual será el 8490770. 8770. Cuando se le solicita el número de identificación de participante, presione la tecla de numeración. Y luego, cuando se le solicite, ingrese la contraseña 848480. Esperamos que haya muchos oradores, y la Junta desea escuchar a tantos de ellos como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que desea que escuchemos en tan solo dos minutos. Sin embargo, le pedimos que comprenda que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos que todos los que se hayan tomado el tiempo de acudir a esta audiencia hoy a declarar tengan una oportunidad de hacer oír sus voces. También tomaremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera del horario de nuestras audiencias públicas. Debe entregar su declaración antes de la medianoche de esta noche para garantizar que llegue a los miembros de la Junta antes de nuestra votación final. Puede encontrar datos sobre cómo presentar su declaración en nuestro sitio web, de nuevo, nyc.gov/rgb, o puede dejar una declaración en audio al llamar al 929-256-5472. Les damos las gracias por su cooperación.
Thank you. We will now proceed to testimony. Oh, I believe, I believe we have Assemblymember Epstein present. Welcome. There you go.
It's good to be here. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to justify. Good to see some of my friends and former colleagues on the RGB, as some people who newer to the board knows that I served on the RGB for five years, and it's good to be back and to be talking to you all about your plans for this coming year. As you may know, where this year, 28 assembly members representing all of New York City called on rent guidelines for to issue a rent freeze for struggling tenants. That letter was delivered to your, to you earlier today. You know, as we know, the past year, tenants are facing the worst pandemic that we've seen, you know, in about a century, and the tenants are much worse off than the landlords. We can see it every day, and government has really stepped in with the emergency rental assistance program, which is $2.3 billion, which is really going to help small struggling landlords, as well as large landlords across the city, focusing on tenants whose incomes are below 80% of AMI. But in addition to that, we put money aside for tenants whose incomes are above 80% of AMI. And for landlords who tenants may have no longer been in the apartment or may not want to sign off on the agreement. So this issue of affordability continues to exist in our city. Homelessness, unemployment, and rising rent and costs really affect tenants every single day. Your income expense study showed that there's continued to have financial gain for landlords between 18 and 19. Net operating income and OI grew another 2.9%. The 14th time in 15 years, we've seen this increase. You know, also rental income has gone up again by over 3%. Income expense study found that in 2019, landlords' net income, net operating income of $300,000, almost three times of New York City median income. You see, the vacancy rates are historic lows, they'll continue to be low, and this is during the beginning of the pandemic, we see this problem continuing. This is a moment that we need the rent guidelines board to step up and take responsibility to ensuring that the millions of tenants get the rent relief that they need. We're providing the funding. We need you to rent freeze rents this year, and I'm available for any questions if any board member has them.
Thank you, Assemblymember. I think we'll move on to our next speaker. Thank you so much. I see that we have next on our queue is Assemblymember Gottfried. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I urge you to put off any rent increase this year and preferably to roll back rents. The pandemic has made data collection difficult, but we know that... Should I start again?
No, we heard you.
Oh, okay. But we know that both landlords and tenants have taken a hit. Tenants have had a tougher time. The RGB's income expense and affordability data studies show that most landlords entered the pandemic in good shape. Their net operating income was robust as in previous years. The community preservation corporation's testimony concludes that most landlords are, quote, "hanging in there," unquote. On the other hand, signs of tenant distress are clear, especially at the low end of the income scale. Data from the Community Service Society and the Furman Institute shows that more, more of these tenants have fallen behind on their rent, that, that the average amount of rent that they owe has ballooned, and that most of these households, households in rent-regulated units face the crisis without getting any rent reduction or deferral from their landlords. We have every reason to believe that tenant rent burdens have grown even more with the pandemic. Requiring them to pay even higher, ever higher rents will increase evictions and homelessness, and diverting even more tenant income resources to rent will have a devastating impact on New York's economic recovery. Therefore, I urge you to freeze rents and preferably to adopt a rent rollback for the coming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Assemblymember. Hi, Christina. I just, for the record, I'll just note that Christina DeRose has joined us when Assemblymember Epstein was testifying. Thank you, Assemblymember Gottfried. I see that we have Senator Rivera joining us. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Let me know when I can start.
Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of tenants in the Bronx and in my district, I'm here tonight to express my strong opposition to the Rent Guidelines Board proposal to increase rent for rent stabilized tenants. Now, the past year and a half, as my colleagues have said, New York City residents have faced unprecedented challenges. Early 2020, the unchecked spread of COVID-19 wreaked havoc upon the city. We face loss of everyday routines, the comfort of seeing our friends and family, and the loss of many loved ones. The passing of many members of our community continues to weigh heavily upon us and is an emotional pain, but also an economic one. Many families lost loved ones who were the main breadwinners in their households. This loss has put families at a disadvantage that may take years to overcome. If some have tried to take up the mantle of those who have passed, but the closure of so many sectors of our economy has made this feat incredibly difficult. A year and a half later, after COVID initially spiked in New York, many have permanently lost their job as businesses have closed their doors forever. Some constituents, even essential workers, have had to hours, their hours of pay cut dramatically. So my constituents were tiresy to find new career paths, new employment opportunities, and even pick up multiple jobs to help supplement their income. But the Bronx is facing a startling unemployment rate of almost 40%, a rate that this country has not seen since the Great Depression. So as a result of all these factors, many families are not able to pay the rent that they should, that they could two years ago, notwithstanding the crisis level rates of severely rent-bettered families in the Bronx. So we must allow the safety nets of our recovery to do their work and not place the burden of the real estate industry's profit margins on the back of low-wage workers, essential workers, grieving families, and unemployed New Yorkers living in the dwindling numbers of rent-stabilized apartments left in our city. A rent freeze will allow tenants to find their footing in the wake of this crisis. It will lessen the blow of losing wages, losing jobs, or losing family members and loved ones. This board knows that any rent increase for New York's tenants is a hindrance to our community's recovery and is simply not feasible for our most impacted families. The sweeping majority of landlords are also receiving assistance, rent relief from the state, and so many continue to thrive due to the already incredible rents and bulging portfolios. So on behalf of the Bronx, of all of my constituents, I urge Rent Guidelines Board to vote in favor of a rent freeze this upcoming year.
Thank you, Senator. I see we have, joining us, Public Advocate Williams. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Can I begin now?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much. As was mentioned, my name is Jermaine Williams, Public Advocate of the City of New York. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity. I'd be remiss if I did not share that, as I did last year, the complaints of tenants about the shortness of the hearings and the inability of many tenants to register to testify. Additionally, as you plan for next year, I hope you go back to the schedule of previous years, holding the same number of hearings across the boroughs as we saw was in effect pre-pandemic. The affordable housing and homelessness crisis is now compounded exponentially as a result of more than a year of facing the terrible crisis of COVID-19. As we move toward this public health emergency, tenants still can appear and directly tell their stories, but because of the emergency and the economic devastation it's caused, now more than ever, the board must hear the voices of tenants and act accordingly. Though, the board has had the power to make significant difference in the lives of workers, those of limited means, those who are barely hanging on to middle class, and most importantly, those people who cannot pay their rent. Sometimes we look at these things as if it was a snapshot of one time, but it's not. And you've heard these numbers before, they bear repeating. I understand that two-year lease increases in 2008 were 8.5%, 2009, 6%, 2011, 7.25%. In 2013, 7.75%. Those increases were not guided necessarily by income expense or cost of living, especially for those of tenants. It was a blatant attempt to, that continued to drive up rents to the point of deregulation. These high increases continue through 2015. We have to remember that when we take into account. Currently, the city's seasonally adjusted unemployment was 11.4% in April 2021, 0.3% of March, a decrease from 4.2% from April 2020. New York State's rate was 8.2% in April 2020. Now, one of the, I've been testifying for almost 20 years. One of the biggest concerns I have always been, and I hope it changes, is that we treat everybody the same: small landlords, big landlords, bad landlords, and good landlords. This is not something that we should continue doing. I know it's not in the purview of this Rent Guidelines Board, but hopefully this fate has to change. With all of that said, and understanding that everybody needs assistance, tenants, and particularly small homeowners, I ask the board to at minimally do the minimum amount that was said in the preliminary hearing, if not better. The minimum amount, if not better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Public Advocate Williams. I see that Borough President Brewer has joined us. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair Reese, and all of the board, members of the Rent Guidelines Board. I am calling on the Rent Guidelines Board to vote for a rent freeze. I think you know that former RDB Director Tim Collins demonstrated that the board had authorized some time ago 211.53% of cumulative rent increases, starting in 1991, when in reality, the amount needed to keep owners whole was only 181.46%. What that means is that the board's determinations have overcompensated property owners by 30.07% over the past 30 years. On the other hand, tenants are experiencing a loss of jobs, as you know, and income due to the pandemic, which has deepened their financial struggles, as you have heard. The Furman-centered NYU has found that the share of households that owe more than $3,000 in rent increased by six percentage points compared to the prior year. Households that owed more than $10,000 in rental years more than doubled over the same period. So we're talking about the pandemic. So I urge the board to review these findings in the context of three decades of rent guidelines for determinations that favored owners over rent-stabilized tenants. When you see it this way, all current unaffordability among rent-stabilized households include the result of accu- or 30% in rent increases since '91. It was a pandemic that caused some tenants to suddenly become unable to pay rent, no question. But the amount of total rental arrears among rent-stabilized households is higher than it should be if there hadn't been historic overcompensation to property owners. I asked the board to vote for a rent freeze for another year. It's the right way to close this historic overcompensation gap. I do thank the board for recommending, as they have in the past, the 0% increase for single-room occupancy and house rent. It's so vulnerable, and I do hope that we can work with the small landlords. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Borough President Brewer. I see that we have Adam Liggio. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Liggio.
Liggio. Welcome, Mr. Liggio.
Hi. My name is Adam Liggio. I am actually on the Board of the Tenants Association of Steytown, and I'm, I'm here to ask the board to make a zero increase for this year. It's been very difficult for everyone, especially here in Steytown, in a place that has 11,000 rent-stabilized apartments. It's estimated that between 2,000 and 3,000 apartments are empty. This was an exodus of people who just couldn't afford the rent. In addition, many of the people who are here are still just holding on. We have had a pandemic. Whole industries went out, have been put on hold, as well as the dual-income household is really hurting here because a lot of people have lost their jobs. So, and even so, with all the apartments vacant, our landlord refuses to make any adjustments to the rent for people suffering. And they appear to be warehousing these 2,000 to 3,000 rent-stabilized apartments, saying that they can't rent it when they will not adjust it to some kind of value that it will have, but yet they say they can't afford services because they won't rent these apartments. So again, I asked the board to keep the increase or decrease at zero.
Thank you for your testimony. I have someone whose phone number ends 082. Could you let us know your name? Oh, you're muted, and can you let us know your name? To unmute, I believe you have to press star six. Andrew, do I have that right?
Correct.
So if the person with phone number ending 082 can press star six, we can hear, hear your testimony. Are you ready?
Hi, my name is Sarah. My family has owned the same property for decades.
I'm sorry, Sarah. Could you give us your last name as well?
Sfaya. Sarah Sfaya.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. My family has owned the same property for decades, and our goal is to preserve affordable housing. We cannot do that without reasonable rent increases. Over the past few years, the rent freezes have made it impossible to operate where income is 0%, but expenses go up by 10%. The rent income remains the same, but expenses like taxes, water, insurance, keep going up, and we keep getting squeezed from both sides. This is not a business venture. This is our livelihood. We live here. We have a sense of community. We employ people in the area. Everything has a trickle-down effect, and I don't like how people make it sound like rent goes straight into our pockets and that's the end of the story. No. The rent money does not go straight into our pockets. It pays the property taxes, the heat, the hot water, people like the super, the painter, the stuff we buy from the local hardware store. Those people in turn use that money to pay their staff, pay their bills, feed their families, just like we do. If money is going out the door faster than it's coming in, what do you think is going to happen? How can we expect to preserve affordable housing this way? The board should not ignore the income and expense data. The data is underestimating costs anyway. It's outdated. It's based on 2019, pre-COVID times. It doesn't reflect the cost of water, gas, and maintenance that has gone up in the past year and a half since everyone has been staying home. The apartment is now their home. It's also their workplace. It's also their school, et cetera. To make matters worse, we have unpaid rent due to COVID and vacancies. There's a falsehood that the E-RAP is a bailout or a windfall for owners. This program is supposed to help tenants cover their rent arrears, but that's only if a tenant chooses to apply and if they qualify. Not everyone qualifies. And as you know, the website is not very user-friendly. We have great relationships with our tenants, but some don't want to apply for the E-RAP program. I have a tenant who does not speak English and is not text-based. Asking him to log onto the website to verify information is impossible because he doesn't know what he's signing off on. For other tenants, they receive unemployment or stimulus checks, and we've worked with them anyway to figure out a way to keep them in their apartment. I'm asking the board to vote for an increase of 2% for a one-year renewal. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I see Veronica is our next speaker. Veronica, could you let us know your last name as well? And just so you know, you're, you're not on camera if you intended to have your camera on. She, she requested Spanish interpretation. Thank you.
Señora, ¿puede hablar si desea?
Sí. Buenas tardes. Gracias por estar aquí. Mi nombre es Verónica Cedeño. Soy del, mi nombre es Verónica Cedeño. Soy miembro del comité de Basta. Se hace camino a Nueva York. Actualmente vivo aquí en el 4140 de Manhattan Street. Mi renta estabilizada cuando comencé a vivir en este apartamento del 2013 era por 1,150 por mes. Pero a partir de eso fue cuando yo firme el primer lease. En el siguiente año, mi renta iba a ser de 1,870. Es un gran incremento que pasó por la renta supuestamente preferencial. Aunque este problema se ha arreglado con el paso de las leyes de protección del 2019, esto no ha bajado mi renta. Mi renta ya estaba bastante cara. Siendo yo madre soltera, viviendo con dos hijas y con pocos recursos, este precio ya es bastante para mí, para ir al día. Como lo del COVID-19, he sido afectada. Pues he perdido ingreso, además, enfermé muy gravemente con el COVID. Pues he perdido ingreso, además, enfermé muy gravemente con el COVID, y he tenido más gastos médicos. Así que para mí es difícil pagar este monto de 1,870. Cada noche me preocupa mucho porque entro en pánico. No sé cuándo voy a ser expulsada de mi apartamento. La renta en Nueva York es demasiada alta, y me temo que mi hija y yo quedaremos sin hogar. Aunque ahora yo estoy con la justa pagando mi renta, no digo que no, si la estoy pagando, pero estoy con pánico. Me preocupa mucho de que en cualquier momento vaya a decirle "Oh, ya no va a ser una renta preferencial, va a ser la renta que es de 1,870", y eso para mí es difícil poder conseguir esa cantidad. Actualmente pago 1,800, 1,395, que todavía es un poco bastante alto. Decidí estar aquí para compartir mi historia y pedir que se reduzcan estas rentas de un 5%. Porque este ingreso no sube.
Thank you. Gracias, señora. Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias por su testimonio.
I see that we have Ellen White as our next speaker.
Pero que tenemos Ellen White como la siguiente oradora.
Hello.
Hello. Ellen, your camera's not on if you had intended.
Ellen, su cámara no está prendida si la quería prender.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, gracias.
Hello. Hello. Much of the media reports and testimony this week from tenants have focused on large corporate landlords. I fear that the hard-working, small-business landlords have been forgotten. I do have a personal stake in this, as my parents are landlords in their 80s and counted on their small 16-unit building to secure their retirement. Unfortunately, this is no longer possible. Due to rising taxes, expenses, regulations, and COVID, small-business landlords are struggling. Instead of breaking even, they are incurring net losses. Over the past year, commercial businesses have closed and residential tenants have moved out, often leaving rent arrears and sometimes damage to apartments that need to be renovated. The vacancy rates are very high despite efforts to rent the apartments. While significant efforts have been made to support small businesses with important programs such as the Paycheck Protection Program, landlords have been expressly excluded from these relief funds. More needs to be done to support tenants and landlords alike, but the data has shown that the current system does not work. Rent is necessary to maintain buildings, pay taxes, and pay for utilities. I would request that the perspective of the landlord be considered. Unfortunately, taxes and expenses are only increasing, even as vacancy rates have skyrocketed and property values have plummeted. I would ask that the RGB follow the data and vote for an increase. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is going to need Spanish translation.
Welcome, Fabian Bravo.
¿Cómo están? Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fabian, y soy miembro de Vecinos Ayudando a Vecinos. Yo soy preocupado y con mucha angustia, y como muchos de mis vecinos, estamos al pendiente de la decisión de ustedes. Si ustedes aumentan el porcentaje de renta de este año, muchos vamos a estar en una crisis económica muy difícil. La pandemia del COVID-19 me produjo una crisis económica, la cual aún tenemos deudas, y no hemos pagado la renta en los últimos meses. Y posiblemente nos lleven a un desalojo por no pagar el alquiler. Eventualmente, mucha gente como yo tendríamos que buscar un shelter para vivir. Y como un efecto dominó, habrá más gente viviendo en las calles y en los trenes. Le pedimos que voten un 0% en este año. Todos necesitamos un poco de paz en nuestra situación económica. Le pedimos no más aumento, no más aumento. Muchas gracias por su atención a todos. Hasta pronto.
Gracias, Fabian. Le voy a decir que extrañamos a su hija este día.
I see next we have Howard. I believe it is Howard Chin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Howard, we can hear you. We can't see you if you intend to be on camera.
Yes, my video is now working properly.
Okay, you're welcome to start testifying now.
Yes. Hi, my name is Howard Chin. I'm a small property owner in Manhattan. I manage a 26-unit apartment building with two retail stores. And as with any business, there are profits and losses. Since the start of the pandemic, my rental income, which is also my retirement income, has dropped dramatically. I know no other occupation, I should say, establishment, where we are forced to reduce the price. As you know, when you go shopping, everything has gone up. Like, it's like gas, transportation, food, lumber, everything. The landlord, as a group, is only a force to drop prices. So you make this determination on what percent increase you want to grant us. Right? Please take this into consideration. Because it's not realistic and it's not fair. You give a 0% when everything has gone up, and we give a lot of rent concession. Like, in my building alone, I gave anywhere from 12% to 28% rent concession. It's really the retail store tenant and my free-market tenant that's holding up the rest of the building. But I allow rent-regulated tenants are paying very low rent. And it is these free-market tenants and the store tenant that is resubsidizing your rent. So please take this into consideration. You consider what's a fair percentage to give landlords. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I see that we are joined by Sam Schreiber, I believe. Sam, you're muted, and we don't see you on camera if you intend to be on camera. You're still muted. Sam, you're still muted. We can't hear you. Sam, you're muted. We can't hear you. I'm not sure, Andrew, do you think we should... Oh, Sam, I think we can hear you now. Sam is off. Oh, Sam is on. Hi, Sam.
Well, can you hear me?
Now, we can hear you and we can see you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Sam Schreiber, and I am part of a family that owns a couple of small buildings in Manhattan. And, you know, I wanted to sort of get into a couple of details in regards to raising expenses that a lot of us colleagues and other small-time landlords have incurred over the last few years, primarily real estate taxes. We have a couple of small buildings with 10 or 15 units, and I just wrote down some of the specifics of our property taxes, starting in 2016. One of our properties was, and I'm going to, I'm going to approximate, 65,000 in 2016, 86,000 in 2017, 102,000 in 2018, 115,000 in 2019, 130,000 in 2020. So between 2016 and 2020, our property taxes doubled. We have good relationships with all of our tenants, free-market, rent-controlled, rent-stabilized. We want everyone to be happy. And unfortunately, we have to raise the rents just to break even on expense increases. This does not include insurance that went up 8%, 10%, 7%, 14% over those years. Water costs have gone up, utilities have gone up. And unfortunately, we're going to find ourselves being outpaced by these expense increases over time. And we'll have to make decisions on what improvements to make to the properties. Ultimately, if expenses went down, we'd be more than happy to freeze rents. If the city decides to roll back property taxes, we'd be happy to roll back the rents. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and we do need some relief. I sometimes tend to think, let's give the building to the tenants so they can understand, because there's generally a confrontational relationship that you see in the papers on landlords and tenants, but that shouldn't be the case. But ultimately, we do need some assistance.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
David, can I make a quick announcement?
Yes.
I just want to reiterate that your name...
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Your name on Zoom needs to be the same name that you registered with. We have some folks on here that don't even have names, one with their hand raised. The person with your hand raised, it's the name of your phone. I don't know who you are. If you've registered to speak, you need to leave and come back in with your actual name. Maybe if you sign out of Zoom, or you can respond to the email that you were sent. Thank you.
I think we have Samantha. I believe it's Samantha Bravo as our next person to testify. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Shayla. It's really nice to see you again. Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Bravo, and I am with the organization Neighbors Helping Neighbors. As you all know, COVID-19 has changed our lives in every aspect. Many lost jobs, many lost their homes, and many lost their loved ones, myself included. Every New Yorker has been bombarded with uncertainty, uncertainty, and has been forced to create solutions for their financial situation. My mother, for example, has been using a bicycle this past year instead of public transportation so she can reduce her COVID exposure and that, and so that she can save money. And many of my neighbors have also depended on food banks to eat well. And as New York is opening again, so will money-hungry landlords. And many landlords will try to take advantage of our vulnerable situation by harassing us, and if you guys, if you all increase the rent, it's going to be even easier for them to take advantage of us and, like, put us out on streets. A rent increase isn't needed or necessary, a rent decrease is, or a rent freeze. And people still need time to get back on their feet and recover from the financial and personal loss they've had. So do the right thing and decrease the rent. You're the only hope for thousands of tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Isabel Pedro as our next speaker.
Can you hear me? Give me a second for my video.
Yep, I hear you and see you. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. My parents and I are housing providers. My father's first job in this country was as a dishwasher. He has worked seven days a week for over five decades. And even in his 80s, he still does as many of the repairs as he can himself. He has revived buildings and provided homes and communities nobody wanted or cared about. But the government doesn't take into account the costs of any of these sacrifices. This month, we received thank-you notes from two tenants who are leaving. Yet at these hearings, tenants often complain about the big conglomerate landlords. The irony is that without these increases, the government and the RGB are only making them bigger and more powerful. You make us beg for increases every year that you were supposedly mandated to provide, even knowing that this year, the government increased our real estate taxes in a pandemic and increased our water and sewer costs in a pandemic. The government has given us no reprieve or assistance during COVID. The government also increased our costs through regulations for gas pipe inspections and lead paint. But those costs aren't included in your pie. The government has spent the last year telling everyone to follow the data and the science, but that doesn't apply here. Government talks about trillions of dollars to repair aging infrastructure, but nobody wants to talk about New York City tenement buildings that are over 100 years old and the cost to repair them. Instead of providing reasonable increases over the last seven years, the government has politicized the RGB against us. If some tenants cannot afford increases, then the government must do better. But that is a burden that must be shared by society and not placed on the backs of immigrant families to personally subsidize. The government could expand the SCREE or DREE programs or create the proposed DREE program, but they choose not to, and one must ask why. This isn't sustainable, and you know that. Perhaps that is the plan. Loans and debt are not an option. Banks won't lend to a business that can't increase revenue or even enforce its contracts. And that is why the only winners are de Blasio, his developer friends, and the large landlords that tenants are complaining about here today.
Thank you for your testimony. I see, I believe it's Barbara Schillkraut. I hope I pronounced your name properly. Barbara, you're muted, and your camera's not on if you want to turn on your camera.
Unmute and video.
I see you and I hear you. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Barbara Schillkraut. I'm a member of Tenants and Neighbors and the Rent Justice Coalition. I live at 208 East 21st Street, Manhattan. That's the Grammer Sea Park neighborhood. I've been living here for 47 years in a rent-stabilized apartment. Each time I renew my lease, I choose the maximum time allowed, which is two years. My rent has increased 360% in the 47 years. I am retired since 2016. After my Medicare insurance payment and rent are deducted from my monthly social security, I am left with $212 for the month. It's difficult to survive, which is why the Rent Guidelines Board should not increase rents. I have lived in Manhattan all my life. I believe it would be unjust to force me to move at this time in my life due to rent increases. Rents should be affordable. In addition, the landlord does not have a super residing in the area required by law. Despite having made numerous complaints, the landlord has not been required to follow the law. In an emergency, no one addresses the problem for one or more days. This has been the case for over 40 years. Thank you for the opportunity to make my statement before the Rent Guidelines Board.
Thank you for your testimony. I see Vito Seniorelli is here. Vito, you're muted, and your camera's not on, FYI.
Welcome. Okay, can I start?
Yes.
Great. RSA has already discussed at great length the various protections that have been taken for tenants. Now, New York has officially lifted all COVID restrictions. The city's economy was already vastly recovering, but now it is certain reality. Job openings are reaching a record high, and unemployment claims and numbers continue to drop. Unlike the uncertainty surrounding the pandemic last June, we have now reached the light at the end of the tunnel. Building owners, on the other hand, have not had that level of relief. Any funds provided to the universe of landlords and tenants eligible for the new rent relief program cannot be considered an infusion of income because it is simply money that has been owed to landlords. That money does not alleviate rising expenses. On Monday, the Water Board approved another rate increase. Even if this board approved the highest cent of the preliminary range, that alone would not even cover the increase in water expenses. This year's commensurate range has recommended a one-year guideline, no less than 2%, but in reality, this board should be considering two years' worth of data that have called for moderate guideline increases. Last year, the pandemic allowed this board to conveniently disregard an increased PIOC and a decrease of NOI. You can say the pandemic justified a rent freeze, but that doesn't make last year's data magically disappear. We are yet to see the full impact of the HSTPA on the aging rent-stabilized stock. The years of inadequate guidelines and consistent increases in operating expenses had a direct impact on NOI last year and will continue to do so. A third rent freeze, millions of dollars in rental arrears, the HSTPA, rising inflation, and the pandemic will all certainly be reflected in next year's reports. Stabilized housing providers can no longer be the scapegoat for years of failed policies by pro-tenant elected officials. We have seen how well tenants can be protected when government officials are put under pressure from unforeseen circumstances. This is a genuine opportunity for the legislature, not this board, to ensure that these vulnerable tenants are protected in the future. Reasonable rent guideline increases are now realistically the only avenue that owners have to keep up with their rising costs. Continued inadequate guidelines cut off the ability to maintain and repair the buildings. Deteriorating housing conditions will hurt both tenants and owners.
Thank you for your testimony. I see we have Elizabeth Cohen next.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Elizabeth. If you want your camera on, you can turn it on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can you see me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. New York City rent-controlled tenants like me and my rent-stabilized neighbors need the help of the Rent Guidelines Board to survive. It is essential for families like mine. I have watched two good friends divorced mothers with children forced to leave our neighborhood, their school, and friends because they could no longer afford the rent and what they earned. Let's be clear, what's being decided for the Rent Guidelines Board is not just abstract business investment and profit models. It affects the lives of real people like me. Many people assume the rent-controlled tenants like me have real cheap rents. That's not true. I have lived in my apartment for... I have lived in my apartment for more than 62 years. There have been four landlords. My current landlord, the Parkoff Organization, owns 66 buildings. Like the majority of landlords in New York City, they are a very rich corporation, not a mom-and-pop business. My building alone has 72 apartments in it. As a rent-controlled tenant, I paid until 2019 enormous 7.5% increases every year, plus fuel passalongs and MCIs. My income did not increase at the same rate, and it has impacted everything, including my ability to buy groceries for myself and my children. Despite these enormous rent increases, my landlord did not make repairs to our building or to my apartment. My building currently has 70 violations. About a year ago, the building department forced the landlord to put up a scaffolding in front of the building because the fake head of the building was crumbling and pieces falling off. They are concerned that people on the sidewalk might be injured or killed because if the scaffolding wasn't there. Two years in a row, my landlord broke a major water pipe in an apartment above mine. The water cascaded down in the lobby for two days, knocking out the ceiling and saturating the walls of all the apartments in line with water. Mold in the walls resulted, and the landlord literally repeatedly whitewashed them rather than remediate the problem. We are unable to use our kitchen or the west bedroom for more than five months. They still got their 7.5 rent increase and fuel pass loans. The idea that landlords need these rental increases to make repairs is ridiculous. My current landlord did not make the building or my apartment.
We just want to make sure we have 200 people signed up today, so we want to make sure everyone has.
I'm almost done. Thank you. Even with these increases and deep enough pockets to buy more buildings, he did not make the repairs. The heartless and greedy of large corporate landlords.
100 people waiting to go next. I asked.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. And I just wanted to say that I really, what I, I just want to sum up, please. What I urge you to do is roll back rent control increase rates, to roll back the rent control for rent-controlled tenants and to freeze the rent for rent-stabilized tenants. I think this is essential for the lives of many families and tenants.
We're going to have to move on to the next speaker. You're taking time from others. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
I believe our next speaker is Monique Dana.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Sorry, just getting it on.
Yeah, we hear you, but we don't see you yet.
Hi, my name is Monique, and I'm a small property owner. Property owners are the only small businesses that are continually asked and expected to subsidize their customers. I live with my tenants in my building, and this building is my life savings and my livelihood. If you want rent freezes or rollbacks, you need to find a way to provide owner subsidies so that we can maintain our properties. I should not be forced to subsidize New York City tenants. This year, my real estate taxes went up 8%. My building insurance went up 29.8%, and my other operating costs increased significantly as well. The rent of my highest-paying stabilized tenant does not cover his apartment's portion of the building's real estate taxes, and I have to subsidize the other portion of taxes as well as completely cover his heat, hot water, insurance, utilities, maintenance, labor, and other operating costs. In fact, his rent only covers 56% of the operating costs attributable to his apartment, and I cover the other 44% of expenses attributable to his apartment. Would you invest in property if you were required to take money out of your pocket every year to subsidize your tenants? Think about that and ask yourself that question. Chairman Reese of the RGB has said that since HSTPA was enacted in 2019, that rent increases enacted by the RGB are virtually the only source of income that rent-stabilized owners have to cover increasing operating costs. That's why we need you to pass the proposed 2% and 3% increases so that we can continue to provide affordable, safe housing and for us to survive and pay our expenses. If you do not pass these increases, your legacy will be the urban blight of New York City. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I see our next speaker is Karen Flaherty. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. My name is Karen Flaherty, and I'm here with Tenants and Neighbors and Rent Justice Coalition. I live at 11th 17th Street, Union Square, and my landlord is Transworld Equities. I am asking for rent frees. This testimony is personal, but I believe it reflects other senior citizens who are in rent-stabilized apartments, living on a fixed income from Social Security and perhaps a pension, and not eligible for rental assistance. In 2020, during COVID, my spouse became hospitalized for Westisle virus, which threw us into a tsunami of tests, specialists, and hospital stays. We have a Medicare supplement, but not all expenses are covered, and in most cases, a co-pay is required. At the same time, my medical expenses continued. We saw our emergency funds depleted by the end of the year, and a rent increase would present a financial hardship. We have been at the carn address since 1978 and part of the loft law, and eventually grandfathered into rent stabilization. There are six floors, and all floors were covered, but now only two floors remain with this status. We have had five landlords since 1978. Over time, we have seen a 500% rent increase. We currently pay over 30% of our income to the landlord. The other four floors in the building are paying market rents of $12,000 to $20,000 per floor. Demographic is six adults living per floor. In addition, there was a ground floor retail space. They have multiple buildings that fit this successful business model. I believe that the services offered to the tenants are minimal and seem to be actively pursuing the rent-stabilized tenants by ignoring our request to dispose of garbage properly, guaranteeing the right to peace and quiet for all tenants, cleaning of all public areas, to name a few.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Nadia Contra. Nadia, you're muted. And your camera's not on if you wanted to be on. Hello.
Hello. Okay, our immigrant grandparents fled socialism, came to this wonderful country. During the Great Depression, they bought a foreclosed building. Our grandparents turned a single-family brownstone into 10 apartments. Our family kept the building during bad times, during unsettling times. We now are the longest surviving family-owned building on the block. That's right. Our family has owned a building on our block the longest time. Several other apartment building brownstones were sold to wealthy people who turned them back into single-family homes. I can say that in the past few years, about 10 brownstones were taken off the affordable apartment list. Why? Because all the rent regulations don't allow property owners to make a profit. Rising expenses, lower income, or no income at all, people sold. No immigrant family now could buy an apartment building because the bank would never give them a loan because they wouldn't make any money. However, now, we see aggressive and predatory investors ready to pounce. As a family-run, businesses struggle to survive. Will they care about our tenants like we do? Will they live in the building like we do? Will they be asked to make funeral arrangements like we have been? Were they part of the community like we are? We provide affordable housing in that community. Please consider our rising costs. When Mayor de Blasio started, our taxes were $62,000. Now they're 82.
Thank you for your testimony.
Please know that here's a, of being our taxes.
Thank you for your testimony.
Look at the loss. This is a loss.
Move on to the next speaker so everyone has a chance to speak. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. I believe our next speaker is Dorco Reynoso.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here today to ask the board to truly serve its purpose, do not continue to aid landlords in displacing families in the name of profit. At this point, the way we feel in neighborhoods of color, in poor neighborhoods, it's like if you do not have money and you're not white, you do not belong in the city of New York. This rent crisis is not a new problem. It just has been accelerated by the pandemic. The neglect of some elected officials and their willingness to turn a blind eye to the games that some landlords play just so they can get some campaign donations. It's truly shameful. Landlords and developers maneuver the law and the system in order to increase their profits. In this way, they either do rezonings or play games like turning apartments into co-ops, playing games like warehousing apartments and then pricing out that tenant. I've been in my building for the past 24 years, and I cannot tell you the number of tenants that have been removed from here. Right now, my apartment building has 62 units, and it's over 75 units vacant for at least 15 years. Just in the, my landlord, David Israel, owns 11 buildings, 449 units. And just in the past three years, he has evicted 24 families. These are people, not commodities, not stocks and bonds, people, families, that have a right to remain in their homes. While we sit here and discuss, and while big landlords hide behind this small landlords, we just keep talking about their profits and what they're losing, while people are truly losing their homes. And while this young man just spoke about how the light at the end of the tunnel for whom.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, and please protect people, not profits. We need a rent increase, a rent rollback.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adrian Gerstl. Adrian, you're muted, and we don't see you if you want to be on camera.
Thank you. Thank, thank you very.
We hear you, but we don't see you if you want to be on.
Now, can you see?
Now we can see you. Welcome.
Thank you so much for doing this. It is such an eye-opener. I have been testifying at the Rent Guidelines Board way, way, way back when they held them at Cooper Union, the Great Hall. I get extremely upset when I hear, when I hear tenants talk. We have a huge divide. The tenants who are speaking are tenants for big managing companies and landlords. There is a world of difference between a small owner occupied. The last person saying that big landlords are hiding behind small landlords? Oh, come on, give me a break. All right, so I live in the North Slope in Brooklyn. We bought our house 40 years ago, 41 years ago, when it was redlined. We got a mortgage from the former owner. It was a sixth unit. All I have is four rental stabilized. I don't have, like, whatever people are talking about. I have four rent stabilized units. Two of the, we have the arts in the building. The tenant is an artist. There's one who's a playwright, a college English professor, a house manager at a Broadway theater, a dancer who's a pre-K theater, a pre-K teacher. They've been in the building from 33 years to 20 years. Oh, my goodness, I can't believe it. All I say is consider what a 1% increase would do, and that would come to $9 a month.
Thank you so much.
$9 a month, a cup of coffee, a paper, Netflix, donuts, $9 a month.
Watch our next speaker so everyone gets a chance to speak. Thank you so much.
Yeah, David, so I think we've been almost into an hour. If we could just repeat, for those maybe who are joining that are Spanish speakers, that they can listen on the telephone, so.
Okay, we're just going to do that in Spanish, right?
Yeah, we're just going to do that in Spanish, so I don't know if Liz or Oven can read that. I think it's number six.
Sure, I can read that right now. Sure, sure. Thank you, Oven.
Can I just make a quick announcement? I just want to let people know where we are on the list. We are diligently looking for attendees who have pre-registered, but there is an issue if your name doesn't match the name that you registered with. So I'm just going to tell you where we are on the list because you were emailed your registration number. So if you've been passed, if you could either check your name or if you could reply to the email you were sent. The next tenant who's going to speak is number 14. And the last owner who spoke was also number 14, but I know owner number 10 is here. So we're going a little bit backwards to owner number 10. You'll be the next owner to speak, but basically, we're going to 14 and above. So if your number was less than that, please let us know through email or by checking your Zoom name or checking your phone number because we cannot locate you at this moment. Thank you.
I believe our next speaker is Viola Kilgore, if I have that name pronounced properly. You're muted and your camera's off. You're not muted now.
I'm not muted. My camera, okay, turn the camera on. Can't see me much, but you can see my lovely view. I'll move this around a bit. I'm going to make a point real quick at the beginning that somebody was interrupted making at the end of her testimony, and that is the repairs are not made because of a lack of money. Repairs are not, not made because of a lack of money. When landlords have more money, they invested in more buildings, they invested in the stock market, they buy a new boat, they buy a new house. We're talking, obviously, larger landlords. Landlords make repairs when they have to, and that is an enforcement issue. That is a regulatory issue and an enforcement issue. You will not encourage landlords to make more repairs by giving them more money, number one. Number two, small landlords, this, everything seems to get turned upside down. There's small landlords saying, you're mandated to supply rent increases. No. You're mandated to prevent rent gouging, and yet every year, the rents go up. And they, they go up and homelessness goes up. They stay the same at a very high rate, and homelessness goes up. And they go up and homelessness goes up, and you keep repeating that pattern. And I don't know why you would expect to have a different result. So that does not work. Now, with, there are so many deregulated apartments in so many buildings that the only purpose of now, at this point, almost giving the landlords rent-regulated apartments and increases to help them to force out their rent-regulated tenants by raising their rents. They, small landlords can open their books. They can open their books. They can open their books. They can open their books. We always pretend that's not what's, that they don't, that it's too hard. They shouldn't have to open their books. They can open their books. They are guaranteed a hardship increase if they open their books. That's how they fix that problem. Now, somebody said we should turn our building over to the tenants, and then they'll see it. But there are no hurry to turn the building over to the tenants. There are no, there are no hurry to turn the building over to anybody. They want to keep that building. These buildings make money. So all of this is a pile of stuff. And please do not listen to it. Rent should have been rolled back a long time ago, and it should at least, at the very least, be frozen. You're having a social experiment. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Stephanie Donnell Angel.
Yes, hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Stephanie, and my family and I
Thank you. Yes, my name is Stephanie and my family and I run three small properties in Manhattan. I have to say, we do feel like prisoners of these buildings because we're constantly working to maintain them. The city and states bring new laws, regulations frequently that we need to adhere to. They're costly and time consuming. We're not going out and buying boats, we're not going out and buying new buildings, just as the tenant speaker said before. That's not true. We are investing the money back into our buildings. And that's what the small property owners are doing. And you, the Rent Guidelines Board, already recognize that an increase is warranted by acknowledging that with a five to four vote in favor of an increase at your May 5 virtual preliminary vote. We need to continue paying our expenses. They've increased 28% since 2014. Property taxes alone have increased 48% since 2014. Rents have only increased 5%. In a year when property values are down, our real estate taxes this year increased 7.99%. And that's only because they were capped at 8%. Another rising expense is going to be the DEP approved water rate, which is going to be over 2% this July. Why? To offset operating revenues and overdue bills that are delinquent, on a delinquent account due to the pandemic. Well, owners need relief too, even though those tenants don't seem to think so, we do. We've been impacted severely by the HSTPA of 2019. We can't make these repairs that we're doing. The last three rent freezes, heaven forbid, a fourth one, could be catastrophic. But it won't only affect owners, it will ultimately continue to affect tenants in so much as we cannot afford to maintain our buildings the way we'd like to and the way tenants would like us, would like us to. And if you keep denying us any kind of rent relief, it would be horrible for the tenants in the long term as well. If owners have to keep digging into our pockets, and contrary to what many of these tenants are saying, we do have to dig into our pockets to subsidize the buildings. Why bother? We will just get out. And no, don't just make money. We implore you to please approve a rent increase of 2% and 3%, respectively, for both one and two years.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
I believe next is Nora Kenty. Is that correct?
Yes, hi, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Nora Kenty. I'm a housing attorney at Mobilization for Justice, or MFJ. We're a nonprofit that provides free civil legal services to low-income New Yorkers. And I represent tenants in the Bronx, mostly people of color who are facing eviction or who have habitability conditions like lacking water, gas, or electricity. I feel very fortunate to be able to work under Right to Counsel, which New York City communities organized and fought so hard for. Over the last year, and honestly, long before that, I have seen struggling families spend every dime they get toward rent. Many barely even noticed their stimulus checks. They went straight to their landlords. Unemployment benefits to the landlords. First paychecks after getting back to work during the pandemic to the landlords. Every penny of my clients goes to rent instead of food or their kids or certainly any form of self-care that might help them get over the trauma of the last year. Many of my clients are on a fixed income due to age or disability and would become so heavily rent burdened if their rent were to increase that they would likely be forced out. We would see senior citizens losing their homes of decades and families having to enter shelters. We need a rent rollback. Market rents have decreased across New York City. And I think it would be ludicrous if the only rent increases that happened during the pandemic were on rent regulated housing. That's totally backward. We are a city of tenants. Two-thirds of the city are renters. The average New York City landlord, average, owns 21 buildings. Those landlords are not struggling. Most of my clients in the Bronx live in large buildings whose owners have big law firms on retainer. I know that some landlords are struggling, for sure. And fortunately for them, landlords are the ones getting assistance during the pandemic. The $3.5 billion in rent relief assistance for New York is all going to landlords and utility companies. Landlords can apply for it directly. They don't need tenants to apply. We need a rent.
Thank you for your testimony. I think Edward Klein is our next speaker, I believe. Welcome.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for opening these hearings to the public and these perilous times. It's greatly appreciated. My name is Edward Klein. I have my own law firm in New York City for the past 32 years. I'm an employer. I'm also a landlord in the city. I wanted to convey the message, the simple message that I conveyed to you last year, that the rental of living quarters in New York rests on mutually equitable foundations. To expect landlords to accept the RGB freezes and 1% increase that we've had for the last eight years, to expect landlords to be subject to a virtual freeze of any ability to secure a return on their investment in their properties. I mean, when you could take a stock that returns 0%, to suffer the elimination of any vacancy increases after an apartment's been vacant for 20, 30, 40 years, to act as the guarantor for housing, which we put yes to do by Governor Cuomo and the mayor and the city council over the past 15 months of crisis, which indeed is a crisis for everyone concerned. It doesn't result in better housing or more available housing for New Yorkers. I sympathize with all the tenants that I've spoken, but it doesn't address the reality that you can't have zero return on your investment. The present rent stabilization system has resulted in very little additional housing being built for New Yorkers over the past several years, over the past 10 years even. The real estate community has been fleeing New York City because for the last three or four years, in anticipation of and following the passage of the HSTPA, that alphabet soup of the statutes that were passed on June 15, 2019, essentially froze rents while expenses continued to go up. So why should the RGB agree to a 2% increase? For many reasons. First, the increase will result in better housing for tenants. Yes. Notwithstanding what you're hearing from many tenants, many good tenants, the landlords will be able to invest in their properties. And now, what was claimed before, that 21, number of 21 for the average landlord is simply false. Can we just say two more points? 10 more seconds?
Make sure that there's time for everyone to testify.
Okay, thank you for hearing us out, and please vote for a 2% increase. Have a great day.
I think, is Charlie, I believe Charlie Anderson is our next speaker.
Yes, I'm here.
Charlie, just so you know, we can hear you, but we can't see you if you want to be on camera. There we go.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. Hello, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Charlie Anderson and I will be reading testimony on behalf of State Assembly Member Deborah Glick, who was unable to be here in person this evening.
Welcome.
New York City is emerging from a crisis few of us could have imagined as we entered 2020. New York City has so far reported almost 1 million cases of COVID-19 and more than 33,000 deaths, leaving families and communities to deal with a tremendous amount of grief. The pandemic and the ensuing shutdowns and forced to protect public health created an economic disaster for the city and its residents. Workers lost their jobs with New York reporting its worst single-year job loss numbers since the 1930s. As infection rates have dropped and businesses have reopened, I've watched the city slowly come back to life and with great relief, but also with the knowledge that it will take time, work, and healing for New York to recover from the traumas of the past 15 months. The same goes for the economy. While federal aid has helped the city solve some short-term challenges, the recovery for tourism, hospitality, entertainment, restaurant industries is projected to take years, not months. Last year, I was grateful that the Rent Guidelines Board understood the crisis being faced and passed a 0% increase for one-year lease renewals. This year, the board has proposed a 0% to 2% increase for one-year renewals and 1% to 3% increase for two-year renewals. Given the economic insecurity so many New Yorkers continue to face, I believe it is unconscionable to saddle New Yorkers with an increase, with any increase in their rents. The process of getting the city back on its feet and returning to a sense of normal productivity will take the efforts of all New Yorkers and residents should have to, should not have to contend with housing insecurity as they work to rebuild their communities. I understand that landlords are also facing economic difficulties, but their eligibility for additional federal aid and the likelihood that some funds will be made available to them means that they have access to supports that simply are unavailable to many tenants. I strongly urge you to take the compassionate, responsive, and moral action and freeze rents for both one- and two-year lease renewals. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Carolyn Meckler. Carolyn, you're muted and we don't see you if you want your camera on.
Now, can you see me?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Okay, I found the.
We can see you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a small property owner on the Upper West Side. I manage a single building with five units with my daughter. We live in the building and we don't take a salary for maintaining the building. I have never once evicted a tenant in 21 years. I sympathize with the struggling tenants. But there are a lot of programs in New York City to help struggling tenants. No fixed income seniors should struggle. There's scree for them. But there's no equivalent program for struggling landlord. In 2020, my building made $2,540. I didn't take a salary, neither did my daughter. In 2019, I had to replace the boiler and I lost over $100,000. This is not maintainable. 28% of my income goes to paying property tax. In 2020, my property tax increased 6%. Every single year, the city asks for more money. There's got to be a balance and you guys need to find a way. If you want us to keep rents down, you need to keep our costs down. My last thing I want to say is I have struggled to improve my building for both my stabilized tenants and for my non. And when I spent $30,000 in legal and engineering fees to try to add a washer dryer room to my little building, the city said no, because it said it wasn't handicapped accessible. But this is a brownstone with no elevator. That's a logical statement. And that hurts both everybody and makes no sense. So it prevents me from raising my rents on my non-stabilized tenants and.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Our next speaker.
La siguiente persona.
I believe it's Solange Cabral. Solange, you're muted and your camera's not on.
Me escucha, me escucha.
We can hear you.
I escucho.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sí, mi nombre es Solange Cabral, vivo aquí en Washington Heights, en el 650 de la 173. Este vivo en un edificio de apartamento de renta estabilizada y le pido a la junta que por favor congele el alquiler. Dada la situación que la pandemia golpeó mucho en mi comunidad, hemos perdido ingreso y duramos como por seis meses el landor sin el servicio del gas. Y todas las reparaciones que nos han hecho hemos ido porque hemos llamado al 311. De lo contrario, tuviéramos viviendo con rata, cucaracha, y en una condición de probable. Este, yo sé que si ellos votan a favor del Orlando, van a haber 2.5 millones de New Yorkers y no afectados por la decisión de la junta de regulación de renta. No queremos más aumento. Aquí hay tres apartamentos por tiempo vacío que el landor pagaban $800 y el landor lo está rentando a 2,800 las rentas. Es decir, que lo que viene no lo pueden rentar porque la renta es demasiado alta. Hemos tenido varios dueños en este edificio, como tres dueños ya, que pasan de uno a otro. Y yo creo que la junta debe pensar, antes de votar a favor del Orlando, considerar que hemos sido golpeados por una pandemia, que hay personas ahora mismo en psiquiatría con problemas de salud mental debido a la ansiedad de cómo va a pasar el tiempo y qué va a pasar, dónde nosotros vamos a vivir en la calle. Vamos a tenernos que irnos a la calle a vivir. Y yo le pido que se ponga un poquito en la posición de nosotros los inquilinos y que voten a favor de congelar la renta. No es justo y creo que algo que debemos tener en cuenta. La pandemia más grande que va a hacer fueron personas
Thank you so much.
que perdieron sus empleos, perdieron ingreso y no estamos ahora mismo en condición de pagar un incremento más a las rentas.
Gracias, señora.
Gracias por la oportunidad.
Gracias por la oportunidad. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Gina Bolden Rivera. Gina, you're muted Gina, and your camera's not on if you want it on. Gina, we still can't hear you. You're muted. I believe you can unmute or turn on your video by hovering over your name. That might help you. I'm not sure what device you're on, but Gina, we can't hear you. Andrew, maybe it makes sense to bring someone in while Gina works through the technological issues.
Andrew, can I, can I just recommend, David, that we remind folks what numbers to press when we remind them that they can go? So star six, because you can call in on an iPad and still call on the phone. You can do both. So some people might be seeing it and think that they can hit it on the screen and they can't.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, and let me just add, in some instances I try to promote and either they're not accepting or it's not. So I just ask to speak and then they become a panelist. So in that situation, if you're looking for video, you may not be able to do it at that point, but you would still certainly be able to speak. But we always try to promote. If we can't, then we allow them to speak, so.
Okay, great. So Gina, if you could figure out how to unmute, I'm going to ask Sheila Gitlin to speak and then Gina, I'll ask you to speak afterwards. Sheila, your camera's not on if we are on.
How do I get the camera on?
I don't know if I could.
Oh, I think I see it.
Okay, yeah, we see you.
Video setting, no.
Yeah, you're on, you're on the camera.
Oh, okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I wanted to say that the money generated from the property to properly maintain the building is desperately needed. A car can't run without gas and rent is the gas for the building. Real estate taxes has gone through the roof, excuse the pun, and continues to soar. I supply the heat for all my tenants more than what the law requires. I have double insurance and one is flood insurance. I have a tenant on SCRI frozen rent. I recently had two vacancies, had to rent them for the same rental as the previous tenants. They both had a choice of one or two years, both took two years of course. 0% for one year, second year, 1% increase. How can I continue to accommodate my tenants when I get 0% or $11 increase for the second year? Repairs are costly. Recently paid over $4,000 to have work done on my deteriorating parts of my roof and building, which was causing severe water problems in the apartment. I have great tenants. I love them and I believe they love me. I want to be able to upkeep their homes. And if this is going to continue, I'm, you know, possibly I'm going to lose the building. So I don't know where to go with that. I think I covered everything. I am an owner of a six-family in Brooklyn. And when I hear everybody saying that it should be a rent rollback, that freaks me out. I won't be able to pay the mortgage or nothing. This is a, you know, I own the building and I understand it's rent stabilized. And I would love to give breaks to all the tenants. It's just ripping my heart out. But I need money to support my tenants too. I mean, there has to be a better way to go about doing this. I'm not one of those big landlords. I'm not making millions. I'm walking away with next to nothing. And I do better for them, more heat for them than I have in my own house.
Thank you, Sheila.
You're welcome. And my heart goes out to everybody. I want to see justification for both sides.
Thank you. You know, we now can hear you. You're now unmuted. So if you want to turn on your camera, fine, or if you just want to testify with your voice, that's also fine.
Hi, did you call Gina Bolden Rivera?
Yes, Gina, is that you? Please.
Yes, it is.
Please start your testimony.
Okay. I am an owner occupant of a seven-unit apartment building, which has five rent stabilized tenants. My tenants have lived in the property between five years and 30 years. Therefore, four out of the five tenants are rent stabilized and they pay between 40% and 60% of market rents. My real estate taxes have increased 5% to 10% annually. My utilities increased for the last few years and my rents have only increased 0% to 3%. I have a very good relationship with my tenants, which is why I was able to survive during the pandemic. Even though I did not suffer a personal hardship, I am still angry. Angry because as I listened to the moratorium on rent evictions get extended and extended and I heard my fellow small property owners talk about mortgage arrears and tax arrears, I knew that it could have easily been me because I realized that there was no one that cared about a small property owner of a.
about a small property owner of a seven-unit building. Despite everyone talking about how small businesses were suffering and tenants were suffering and small owners were suffering, the relief programs developed were for small businesses and tenants, but not for small owners until much later in the pandemic. I realized that unlike small businesses, which were classified as such, small property owners were not considered any different than property owners of a hundred units, 500 units, or a thousand units. So no new regulations or considerations have been developed by the government or the politicians to relieve the small property owners. Yes, I am fortunate because my tenants cared about me, that I was unemployed for 15 months, so they paid me.
Gina, thank you.
They cared about me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I believe our next testimony is from Jeannie Dubnow. Jeannie, you're muted and you are not on camera if you want to be on camera. Jeannie, you're still muted. Nope, I know, still muted, sorry. Andrew, do you want to promote someone else in the interim and we'll try to resolve this? Sheila, I didn't exactly follow those technological instructions you'd given previously. Do you want to kind of state them?
Well, if folks are promoted and they are on their phones, they can press star six on their phone pad and it will unmute them on the web so that we can hear your voice. If you don't do that, we won't be able to hear you. So if you do join the Zoom meeting and see us and hear us, you have to press star six in order for us to hear you.
I see Frank Cicero. Frank, why don't you go ahead with your testimony? You're unmuted, which is good, but your camera's not on if you want that on. And then Jeannie will try to resolve your technological difficulties and then we'll go back to you. Frank, the floor is yours.
Yes, good evening. I want to thank all those responsible for removing the fuel cost adjustment, the surcharge for rent-controlled tenants. That was very unfair. And rent-controlled tenants are still feeling it in 2021. I live in a one-bedroom and I'm paying 1227 a month. Meanwhile, a one-bedroom opposite to me that's rent stabilized is paying 944. That's 283 or 285 less than me. There's a three-bedroom rent stabilized apartment in my building where they're paying 1150 a month, which is seventy-seven dollars less than me, and they're enjoying three bedrooms. Where is the common sense and where is the protection for rent-controlled tenants? This fuel pass along, we're still feeling it in 2021. I'm asking the board to please review the surcharge because it's only a surcharge. It's not part of the rent and to please freeze the rent control so that we are treated fairly and justly like rent stabilized tenants. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Jeannie, have you been able to unmute? Or it looks from my end that you're still muted. All right, so Andrew, do you want to promote someone? Let's leave Jeannie up here in case Jeannie can figure out how to unmute. But let's keep moving on with someone else, maybe. Jeannie, when you figure it out, kind of let me know and then I'll have you speak after the person who's speaking currently is finished. I see Lincoln Eckless is our next speaker. Lincoln, you are muted currently and your camera's not on. Lincoln, oh, there you go. You're unmuted. If you want to put your camera on, that'd be great.
My camera. There's a control for the camera.
You seem like you have some company with you.
Yeah, I have the next landlord of New York City in my hands. If I could hold on to the property. Where is the camera?
Lincoln, I had to promote you just to talk because you weren't accepting the promotion. So if you just go ahead and speak, that'd be great.
And then Jeannie, we see you now. So Lincoln is going to speak and then Jeannie, if you could unmute yourself after Lincoln, that would be great. All right, Lincoln, go ahead.
All right, let's see. Since 2002, I think we need to see that that the water bill for pre-stabilized properties or in the city has gone up 116%. Property tax has gone up 136%. In that time, rent has only increased 43%. In the Blasey-Yelts administration, we had, this is across the board, a property tax increase of 48% and a water increase of 14%. And our rent increase has been basically 5%. To me, my property tax has gone up a full 100%. The HSTPA has basically screwed us, small owners, because most of my tenants stayed in place for years that I mentioned. So I'm not getting any 20% increase, this, any other. And I've had deaths and move outs from 2018, 2019, 2020 now. And most of that, I'm screwed where I have these very, very depressed rents. I have a tenant that was paying 350 dollars a month. I need minimum eight hundred dollars just to break even when I factor in all the costs for that particular apartment. We need a consistent series of increases. Like, I understand the emotion of the tenants, but these politicians that are coming in here and saying that there needs to be a freeze, they're not doing the job. And their job is to support the tenants with assistance, rental assistance.
Lincoln, thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Jeannie, we can hear you and you can see you, so you could begin your testimony too.
Okay, so landlord organizations are claiming they will no longer make profits because of the recent progressive changes in the New York State rent laws. Can you show me where these have decreased the rents? I don't think so. I don't think so. Have you studied the fact that landlords have actually increased their profits in New York City? Or you are only looking at the increase in costs? Net operating income for landlords actually went up 2.9% last year. Check me if I'm wrong. I've spoken before the RGB every year for many, many years, and the landlords always say they cannot make a profit unless the rents increase. Well, as I've said every year, let's open the books to prove they're not making a profit. I'm asking the public members, the public members, how many landlords have applied last year for a hardship increase? They had a zero percent one-year lease, right? Did anybody apply for hardship increase? I don't know. You know the hardship increase exists and yet you never make the landlords apply. Why is that? So we know that 72% of rent stabilized tenants who permanently lost their jobs got no rent relief from their landlord, either in the form of a rent reduction or rent delay. Many people, 38% of rent regulated tenants, reported having less than a thousand dollars in their savings account. Thirty-eight percent, 44% of rent regulated tenants say they're classified as essential workers. And 76% of tenants rent regulated reported being on pre-pandemic public assistance program. Now.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Jeannie.
Okay.
And our next speaker, the last three digits of their phone number is 555. We can hear you, so the floor is yours. The person whose phone number is 555, we're ready to hear your testimony.
Hello?
Hey, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my name is Phil Smrek and I am a resident of North Brooklyn. And I first want to say that, you know, when I hear some of the independent landlords call in and talk of their hardships, I have to agree with them. I'm a rent stabilized tenant. I've lived in my apartment for 32 years. And perhaps down the line, there should be some type of delineation between the mom-and-pop landlord that has maybe one or two buildings with, you know, under 25 units and then these huge corporations. Because the first question I have is, why in all of these testimonies do we never hear anyone say, I'm a representative of this large conglomerate and we own, you know, 300 buildings around New York City and we have thousands of units and we need to have an increase? I haven't heard one of those people testify before the RGB and I'm just kind of curious as to why that is. The other thing is, I just want to share a little story with you. I recently ran into a friend of mine who is in the moving business and he moves people, you know, out of the city into the city. And I asked him, I said, so what are the trends? What's going on now post-COVID? And he basically said to me, listen, a lot of these young people that had one-bedroom apartments in the city that were paying $3,000 plus a month, he goes, they're not going back to those apartments now. The trend is to move out to Crown Heights, Bed-Stuy, much cheaper places. And I said, well, what about here in North Williamsburg? And he said, listen, these people haven't gone anywhere. He's like, they've got the money. They're not worried. They can stay. And he said, you, he goes, you're one of the lucky ones, Phil. You've got a rent stabilized apartment. It's your 40 acres and a mule. And I started laughing and I thought, well, you know what? It's kind of true. Yes, I am one of the fortunate people. But let me just share with you this. I put a lot of heart and soul into this community. I've been a member of this community. I've participated in events, helped develop this community. Five years ago, I was in a high-pitched construction and harassment battle. So my point is this, each time you raise the rent, it erodes our 40 acres.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Sarita Ramakrishna. Welcome. You're muted.
Hi, thanks. Hi, my name is Sarita Ramakrishna and I'm a tenant living in Bed-Stuy. I'm also a tenant hotline volunteer for the Metropolitan Council on Housing. Every week, I take calls from tenants in need of advice and assistance and provide that as best as I and other volunteers and staff can. Many tenants who I speak to are living in rent stabilized units. I've spoken to individuals anxious about losing their home for themselves, their relatives and their children, and who are otherwise exhausted from navigating the piecemeal resources that are out there for tenants. So many people have lost jobs and income in the pandemic. And while we are seeing signs of recovery, these economic effects really do remain. Nearly every shift I've had in the last few months, I speak to an anxious caller who was months behind in rent and really not sure what's going to happen to them. I've also spoken to tenants caught in ugly power dynamics between themselves and their landlords, some of whom are completely unwilling to make repairs and are constantly overstepping existing legal bounds. So maybe because many know that they can. Despite this, tenants have an enormous stake in the city. Oftentimes, they were the ones doing the essential activities that kept the city running and continues to do this work in its recovery. A rent increase would mean adding even more to the heavy burden tenants already face, one that was already spiraling out of control prior to the pandemic. The tenants I speak to have a right to good lives and futures in the city that they have contributed so much to and ultimately sustain. It's critical that you all at the Rent Guidelines Board not allow for rent increases this year. Thank you so much for the consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe Emily Mock is going to introduce our next speaker, I believe. Emily, you're muted.
Yep, this is Johnny Mistersay.
Welcome.
Before we start, one second, if we could give four minutes to this speaker.
Okay.
We're going to do consecutive translation. He's going to speak in Cantonese. And Roxy is on and she will translate in English.
Johnny, ¿cómo te va? ¿Cuánto tiempo tienes para hablar? Como acaba de enseñar el reloj.
Ahora comienza.
Espera un momento. Ahora comienza.
Hola, buenas tardes. Soy Johnny. Vivo en la calle de Manhattan durante 29 años.
Hi, my name is Johnny and I've lived in Chinatown for the past 29 years.
Sé que la pandemia ha afectado a muchos trabajadores.
I know a lot of tenants that have been affected by the current pandemic.
Yo espero que el mes pasado se vaya a la casa porque muchos no tienen trabajo.
I would like to push for the Rent Guidelines Board to reduce rent this year as a lot of people have lost their jobs in this pandemic.
Sé que el gobierno ha dado dinero a nuestros habitantes.
So I understand that the government has tried to provide rent relief twice to tenants in these past months.
Ese dinero se da a los dueños.
That money is given so that the landlords will not kick us out.
Si nos vamos, ellos pueden dar más alto a nuestros habitantes.
If we are kicked out from our buildings, the landlord can rent out those apartments to people that can pay higher rents.
Muchas gracias al gobierno de Nueva York por protegerlos. Pero debes saber que la situación actual es muy grave.
I want to thank the New York government for providing protection to tenants. However, I also want to stress the urgency that we are facing right now.
Soy un miembro de la asociación de habitantes de la calle de Manhattan.
I am a volunteer at the Chinatown Tenants Union.
Heche de que muchos habitantes no se han solicitado este beneficio. Tienen que pedirle dinero para pagar.
I have seen a lot of tenants who cannot qualify for these programs and have had to take out loans to pay their rent.
Tal vez hay que pagar más tarde.
And they're still worrying about how to pay off those loans.
Para el dueño, hay que decirle la verdad. Él compró nuestro edificio. Él sabe que tenemos dinero seguro.
So I want to speak about this from my heart. But essentially, these landlords, when they purchase our buildings, they know there are rent stabilized tenants living in these buildings.
Sabes que los dueños están muy felices.
The landlords are happy to see us gone as tenants.
Sí, nosotros no tenemos dinero, pero muchos de nosotros estamos sufriendo. Espero que ustedes ayuden, que podamos vivir en Nueva York.
There are many of us as tenants who are struggling and I would like to ask for your help in keeping us in our homes and for us to be able to stay in New York.
Porque nuestros hijos de la próxima generación están creciendo en la calle de Manhattan. Hay una cosa. Hay una prueba de que nuestros hijos están sufriendo.
I also want to say that I'm fighting for the next generation of kids that are going to be living in Chinatown after me. And there is something in my heart that is hurting me very much that I would like to share.
Thank you.
It's time.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Josefina. Josefina, you're muted and your camera's not on if you want your camera on. Josefina, you're still muted. Andrew, do you want to promote someone as we try to work through the technical?
Yeah, she may have to hit star six.
Josefina, can you hit star six so that we can hear you speak? Could someone translate that into Spanish too?
Señora, buenas tardes. Señora Josefina, nosotros no la podemos escuchar. Si usted para poder activar su micrófono, le puede dar a la tecla del asterisco y el número seis, por favor.
All right, Andrew, maybe worth promoting somebody while Josefina figures that out. You're still muted, Josefina. I think our next speaker is Aracelis Figueroa. Uh, Aracelis, you are muted, and your camera's not on if you want it on.
Yes.
I hear you. Hello.
Okay, I don't know if the camera, where is the camera? Can they see me?
Uh, no, we can't see you. Just a picture of you. Um, you could turn your camera on, but you don't have to. It's up to you. But we can definitely hear you if you want to testify.
Well, I don't know where the camera is, so I'm gonna speak.
Okay, good, welcome.
I signed to speak Spanish. It's my strong language.
Okay, we can have someone translate for you.
Okay. Um, my name is Aracelis Figueroa. I'm a member of the community of District Nine. I'm also a father of District Nine, and I represent the communities of District Nine in the Bronx. Um, the mayor passed Intro One for Six, which helps many families with CityFeds. But he made amends to this new bill that passed that doesn't allow citizens to have an entrance. It prohibits them from being able to provide for their families adequately to qualify for CityFeds. So my question is to the mayor and the committee, how can we maintain our houses, how can we pay these rents if many people have these programs to be able to help with their programs, to pay their rent, to help them live daily? And if they add rent to all these people, that would affect not being able to continue having a home for their families? How can we maintain those programs if you can't make X amount of money? Because else, the program is removed. That's my question for the mayor.
Thank you for your testimony. Josefina, it looks like you are unmuted, so I think we can hear your testimony now. Uh, your declaration. Josefina, if you could give us your first and last name, and then begin testifying, that would be great.
Um, David, because Josefina didn't put their last name, we're not sure it's the right Josefina.
Okay, what do we think your last name should be, Danielle?
I don't want to say that, but the person who registered, registered in English. Which doesn't mean they don't speak Spanish, but they registered in English.
Okay, uh, we can't hear them, so maybe we're gonna move on to the person. We'll leave Josefina on the on the line, uh, and when they're ready to speak, let us know. But let's start with testimony from the person whose phone number ends oh-seven-five. Um, if you could unmute yourself by pressing star six, then we can begin your testimony. And maybe if that could be repeated in Spanish, that'd be great.
We ask the person who called, whose phone number ends zero-seven-five, to activate their microphone so we can hear your declaration. Are we ready to listen?
This is Alvin Doyle. Alvin, if you can hear us, press star six to unmute yourself.
Alvin Doyle, if you can hear us, activate your microphone. You have to press the asterisco and the number six.
All right, Andrew, maybe start promoting someone else. And Josefina and Alvin, if you could figure out how to turn on your sound so we could hear you, then we'll have you speak after the next person. Alvin, you're still muted. Josefina, you're not muted, but we can't hear you speak.
I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, Josefina, am I saying your name properly?
Okay, Josefina Ventura, yes.
Josefina, um, the floor is yours.
Okay, yeah. So, uh, good evening. My name is Josefina Ventura. I'm co-chair of Riverside School Neighborhood Association in Washington Heights. Uh, the COVID-19 pandemic has created a huge economic crunch in New Yorkers who are more rent-burdened than ever. This crisis has had to cause massive layoffs, and hundreds of thousands of unemployment claims, which translates tenants can't pay their rent. Many households are behind in rent payments and without a job, making their situation precarious, almost at the brink of holdovers once the moratorium ends by August thirty-first of this year. This is the main reason we need the R G B to approve a five percent deduction in our rent. Tenants can pay more rent increases. We need the landlords to open up their books. Let's see and analyze the financial statements to make sure they're really losing money. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, the first news phone number ends oh-seven-five. Alvin, if you could press star six so we could hear your voice, you could testify. Um, and Andrew, do you want to promote someone else in the interim? Alvin, if you press star six.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the next person.
Okay, Alvin, we can hear you now. Do you want to begin your testimony?
Yes, I can do it.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Alvin Doyle, and I'm from Stuyvesantown. I'm also a longtime member of the Stuyvesantown Peter Cooper Village Tenant Association. I am advocating a rent freeze for tenants. In my apartment building, on each floor, we have eight apartments. But for most of this past year, our, we, four of our apartments have been empty. At the beginning of this month, we got one, uh, new tenant. So we still have three apartments empty, and it's over for over one year. Uh, rent-stabilized tenants are the tax base of New York, and tenants need help in order to pay their rent and pay their taxes and help our city. So that's why I advocate a zero percent increase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alvin, for your testimony, and, uh, our next, uh, our next speaker has not been promoted yet. And I believe our next speaker is Konstantin Hatzis. Welcome. You are muted, and your camera's not on if you want to put your camera on.
Hi, can you see me?
Yes, welcome.
Awesome, uh, I'll go ahead and start. Uh, over the course of the pandemic, we've seen historic levels of unemployment, looming mass evictions, and homelessness. For those of us fortunate enough not to have lost our homes due to financial instability, we are still faced with the burden of paying rents that were considered unaffordable even before the pandemic began when the economy was said to be booming. Some of us received unemployment assistance and stimulus checks that were an immense help in paying bills and buying groceries and not much else. However, just because we can maintain a level of stability does not mean that we are not struggling. You don't have to be unhoused or living in a shelter to be struggling. Not being able to afford to move to a better or safer home is struggling. Working two or three jobs just to pay rent is also struggling. And that's a typical story for many New Yorkers. Rent stabilization was created as a way to maintain an affordable housing stock in New York City and to protect tenants from the whims of greedy landlords. Right now, my dilapidated one-bedroom rent-stabilized apartment is fifteen hundred dollars. We're about the asking price for a one-bedroom market, market-rate apartment in my area. Rents across the city have fallen over the past year, yet the R G B thinks it's appropriate to raise the rent by as much as three percent on some of the most financially vulnerable people during a pandemic. We have not even begun to recover from everything that transpired over the past eighteen months. We simply cannot afford the damage that a rent increase will cause to the working-class people across the city. Instead, we need a major rent rollback to a level that is truly affordable in our current context. The R G B must protect tenants from greedy landlords who place an overwhelming burden on tenants to fund their personal lives. If you want to raise the rent and fix and maintain my apartment, get rid of the mice, roaches, and bedbugs in the building, remove my ceiling and holes in my floor, and maybe even give me windows that aren't permanently fogged up and obstruct my view outside.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Sarah Lazar. Sarah, we, uh, we, we see you, but you're muted. You're still muted.
Hi, thank you.
We can hear you now.
Great. All right, um, all right, my name is Sarah Lazar, and I live at eight-two-five St. Mark's in Brooklyn. Um, during the pandemic, I lost my job, and even though the unemployment supplements helped, my income for 2020 decreased by thirty percent. On the other hand, my rent doubled. One of my housemates moved out, and there was no way to replace her, and I was on the hook for both rooms. And when I found an apartment for just me, the rent was double what I used to pay, and my rent burden is now sixty percent of my income. I'm one of the lucky people in my neighborhood because my unionized job used to pay okay. I had a retirement account, and I know I'll find another job eventually. But this year was a huge setback. I had never been on unemployment before in my life, and it's hard to talk about it, but I've fallen behind on my student loans, and I've spent my savings on rent and moving costs. And the cumulative effects also mean that down the road, I'll have to retire a year later, if not more. And like so many of my neighbors, my whole life has taken a rollback, and it's only fair for the rent to roll back to compensate for the hardship that this pandemic has placed on middle-class, working, working class, and poor New Yorkers alike. Rent-stabilized tenants don't have assets to refinance or sell off when catastrophe hits. And for decades, they've been enriching landlords, the vast majority of whom have multiple properties, giving them continuous profits even in times of economic crisis. As a member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union, I've seen dozens of rent histories, and they show how the system has been stacked against us. Our rents are already inflated, not only because of past R G B votes, but also because landlords harass countless previous tenants out of their homes, racking up a cycle of twenty percent vacancy bonuses, eventually deregulating half the neighborhood. That's why their complaints of economic hardship now are offensive. We need a five percent rent rollback to even begin to do right by New York City tenants. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
David?
Yes.
Yeah, before we go on, we'll just let everyone know we're at, um, tenant number forty-four. Um, we have, we have, we have gone through all the pre-registered owners at this point. So going forward, it will be tenant folks, and we're on number forty-four. I also just wanted to say if, um, there are folks here who didn't register, they don't want to wait, that you can submit testimony to, uh, the board. The testimony must be submitted no later than midnight tonight to ensure that it gets to members of the board prior to our final vote. You can find information on submitting testimony on our website at nyc.gov backslash R G B, or you can leave audio testimony by calling nine-two-nine-two-five-six-five-four-seven-two.
Thank you, and we should do that in Spanish as well, right?
We want to let everyone know that we've concluded with all the property owners. From now on, we'll only listen to the private owners. And we're on the number forty-four. On the other hand, if you don't want to wait to testify this night, remember to accept comments outside of this audience. You have to present your declaration before midnight this night to ensure it arrives at the members of the council before our final election. You can find information on how to send this declaration on our website, which is nyc.gov/rgb. Or you can simply leave your declaration in audio by calling nine-two-nine-two-five-six-five-four-seven-two. Muchas gracias.
Esteban Giron is our next speaker. Thank you for your patience. The floor is yours.
Good evening. You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Great. Uh, my name is Esteban Giron. I'm a member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union and also part of the Rent Justice Coalition. Also serve on the Board of Tenant PAC. Uh, my husband and I have lived at nine-five-one Carroll Street in Crown Heights for the past eight years. Uh, until we both contracted COVID and my husband lost his job, we were paying at about thirty percent of our monthly income on rent. Now, with only one income, we are at seventy-five percent, uh, in rent. So we're not alone. Jobs have not returned to New York City at the same rate that they have in other cities, and many families find themselves with at least one former income earner unemployed. It's going to be a long climb back for families like mine. Uh, we are, I actually am dealing with, uh, the debilitating symptoms of long COVID or post-acute COVID, which anywhere from thirty to sixty percent of COVID sufferers will have. That means that in New York City, three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand folks right now are going to be temporarily disabled and unable to work. This is a second pandemic that's going to be with us long after the masks have come off for good. Now, I have to say here that I think it's rich to hear landlords complaining that tenants won't want to apply for emergency rental assistance when they've never filled out a form with those sorts of details ever in their life to turn in to the government. Uh, the tenant movement fought really hard to cancel rent, which would have fully compensated small mom-and-pop landlords for their arrears if they had opened their books just as though if they had applied for the hardship from D H C R, which we know they don't do. So, uh, uh, the emergency rental assistance program is not our fault. It's not the tenant movement's doing. So landlords shouldn't get to use the program's inadequacy to further burden the tenants who try to get that rent covered for the most vulnerable landlords. Mom-and-pop landlords should also stop letting the RSA use them to bring maximum profits to big corporate landlords. That said, I urge the board to roll back rents and stop entertaining the notion that there is in any way an even or balanced fight here. Landlord's profit is not equal to us having a roof over our heads. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is going to be, I'm waiting for them to be, uh, promoted to panel, to a panelist. I think it's, uh, Saleha Satar. Um, you are muted, and we do not see your camera if you want your camera on.
Yeah, David, I tried to promote, um, the speaker, and they didn't accept my promotion. But she, uh, the testifier is, um, testifying in Bengali. So, um, I can try promoting again.
Is this Saleha Satar? Is that who we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Saleha, can you, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, thank you so much for giving me a chance for, uh, my, gave me my, my opinion here. Okay, so if anybody is here for to translate my, uh, my speech, anybody is here for help me?
Uh, in Bengali, is that?
Bengal, Bengali, Bengali, yes.
Uh, Andrew, what is?
If not, if not, if not, it is okay. If not, it is okay. Just for two minutes. Okay.
Would you like?
My, my name is.
Would you like me to see if anyone in the coalition can jump in and do it for you, or would you like to proceed in English?
I gave name, uh, Reema Begum, but she is not here. So if Mahfuzul Islam is here, it's okay. Or either, either it is okay. I'll give you a speech in my two minutes. Okay, thank you so much for. Okay, so my name is Saleha Satar. I'm a leader with the Bangladesh Tenant Union, and my landlord is Zara Reality. Actually, sorry, I'm sorry for that.
We, we.
Okay, one year problems cannot be finished. Two minutes, I know that. Everybody knows that. I have had to face a lot of problems. The main problem is our workplace. We are working-class immigrant households, and we have been seriously hurt by the COVID-19 pandemic and are struggled to pay rent. If one cannot work for a year or more, he or she retires for the last three or five years back. When regular rent is the problem, how people pay extra there? I know that the people of this country live happily in peace. But today, we have to talk about our problems in this way. But we respect in this, but we respect the law of this country. Always we respect all kinds of law. But now I say we do not want in, an increase in rent. We want to roll back in rent. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. That was. Thank you. That was beautifully said. We had arranged, someone named Reema was going to come and translate, but that person wasn't present, so we apologize for that, but that was well done. Thank you.
And our next speaker is going to be promoted soon. I see the name. I'm sorry if I want to catch the name properly, if I can. I think last name is Khan. I'm not sure if it's Dr. Khan or M.D. Khan.
Sorry, MB Khan.
Oh, welcome.
Welcome. How are you?
Good, thank you. The floor is yours.
Yes, my name is M.D. Asadu Jaman Khan. I live in 88-15168 State Jamaica, New York 11432. I am living Zara Reality Housing Holding Corporation Building. This building is a lot of building, but I live in this building with a total rent establishment, is it building 188 apartment? Residence is a Bangladeshi pupil living is a 57. Before, there's a lot of Bangladeshi pupil living here, but right now is only 57. Back-end apartment is 13 right now. And we are very, very suffering from Zara Reality. So we are a lot of Bangladeshi pupil living this apartment because Zara Reality. So many Bangladeshi coming again is just living this building, but Zara Reality not allowed any Bangladeshi tenant is by the rent this Bangladeshi. So I cannot understand. This is the law country, but Zara is too much harassment from Zara. Is many, many tenant. So I just request this, I am a Bangladeshi tenant union. I am a secretary, but I cannot do nothing. But we are lot of program, lot of demonstration did it, but should not any result about me, about our tenant. So last, I say, we do not, we do not want an increase in rent. We want a rollback in rent. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
You're welcome.
I'm waiting.
Andrew, can you confirm that we are talking about Reema with the last name B as the person who is supposed to come and support with interpretation in Bengali?
I already hit that row on the sheet. Just give me a second, and I'll check it. I think that was the name. Yes, I can check it.
Okay, I'll just make sure that they know that their members were testifying because I didn't know that we were waiting for her. I thought it was another interpreter. Thanks.
We can decide to, you know, hold off and then go back to them if we feel like that's a better way to proceed.
Well, I think it's their choice, to be honest.
Okay.
I'm trying to read.
Sure.
The woman who testified was the only one who requested interpretation, just for the record. So if somebody else needs the interpretation, somebody else can do it. If you could just let us know, and we will try to arrange it.
Okay. I think we're going to move on to our next speaker, Zial Hassan. You are muted, Zial, and your camera's off. Okay, now we can hear you, and now we can see you. Welcome.
Hello, sir. My name is Zial Hassan. I'm living in 8822 Paxton Boulevard, Jamaica, New York, in the Zara Development Apartment, Realty Apartment. But we face a lot of problem since when we living in Zara. They did not fix our gate windows, and especially in the winter time, they don't give us sufficient heat. So this is one of our problem in our apartment. And now we are facing in a pandemic. We lost our job, and it is very difficult to pay the rent in that moment. And last of all, I can say to you, we do not want to increase in rent. We want to roll back in rent. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
I believe our next speaker is Antonia Martinez. Antonia, if you unmute, and if you want to put your camera on, we're ready for your testimony. Hello.
Hola, hi. Good evening to everybody. So buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por su tiempo y su atención. Quiero empezar con comunicar específicamente a los miembros de la Rent Guide Line Board, que en estos momentos estamos pasando por momentos críticos y difíciles para toda la clase trabajadora, y más aún a las familias que todavía nuestros hijos son menores de edad y dependen totalmente de nosotros. Los padres y más aún todas las familias que los padres cabeza de familia a raíz de la pandemia que se inició formalmente el marzo 2020, perdimos trabajos y que por por lo menos uno de los padres no hemos podido recuperar el trabajo que teníamos, ya sea porque se cerró la empresa donde trabajábamos precisamente porque no se pudo pagar la renta de local, del negocio donde estuvimos trabajando hasta antes de la pandemia, y hasta ahora todavía no podemos encontrar un trabajo, y todavía más difícil para los que perdimos a nuestros padres, hijos, tíos, amigos, vecinos, y vecinos por el virus COVID-19, y porque nosotros, los padres, también nos contagiamos con el virus en su momento, y tuvimos gastos inesperados pero inevitables y necesarios. Entonces, es muy importante que los miembros del comité analicen claramente las dificultades que estamos pasando y, por favor, tomen una decisión justa y razonable, ya que en estos momentos es aún más difícil pagar la renta, ya que la mayoría de nosotros estamos pagando del 60 al 80% de nuestro salario. Va solamente para la renta, y además, para complicar más las cosas como en el caso de nuestro edificio, hemos soportado acoso excesivo, racismo, y malas condiciones en el edificio por parte del dueño y sus trabajadores por varios años. En nombre de todos los ciudadanos, pedimos que en este momento desestimen cualquier tipo de aumento en la renta porque es lo menos que necesitamos. Por lo contrario, lo que necesitamos es ayuda para tener trabajos y ser digno y suficiente para cubrir las necesidades de las.
Thank you for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Lesvia Mendez. Lesvia, you're muted and your camera is not on. Andrew, maybe promote someone else in the interim?
Yeah, she's a Spanish speaker, so we could translate that for you.
Okay, yeah, if someone could translate, asking her to unmute and turn on her camera if you'd like.
Para la señora Lesvia Méndez le pedimos, por favor, que active su micrófono y su cámara, por favor. Para activar el micrófono tiene que presionar o hacer clic en el asterisco o estrella y el número seis, señora. De lo contrario, no podremos escucharla.
Did we lose her? I think we lost her. Yeah. So Andrew, do you want to maybe promote a couple of people? Just we have someone on deck? I see, I think our next speaker is Mahfuzul Islam. You're muted, and your camera's off if you want to turn that on. Mahfuzul Islam, you're muted. If you could unmute yourself. Andrew, do you want to maybe promote someone else, too? I see Tony Cabrera. Thank you. I see Tony Cabrera. Tony, can you unmute yourself? And if you want, turn on your camera? I might, Andrew, even promote a third person as people figure this out.
Yeah, that, again, is a Spanish speaker. If you look at the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew.
Yeah.
Someone can ask Tony Cabrera to unmute himself and give instructions as appropriate?
Señor Tony Cabrera también le pedimos que active su micrófono y su cámara para que le podamos escuchar. Tiene que presionar el asterisco, o sea, la estrella, y el número seis. De lo contrario, no podremos escucharle.
Hola, hola, hola. Buenas tardes. Quiero comprobar si me está escuchando.
Escuchamos, caballero. La escuchamos.
We can hear you, and we can also see you. Thank you.
Lo vemos y lo escuchamos. Puede empezar.
Okay, buenas tardes. Entonces voy a seguir escuchando con mucha atención, y sé que mi intervención será en el número 61, ¿no?
Puede empezar, caballero. Estamos esperando. Puede empezar. Adelante.
Bueno, en relación al tema del pago de las rentas, yo pienso que no debería sumarse ni subirse los precios de los pagos de la renta porque eso nos afecta en la economía a muchos hispanos que hemos visto mermada nuestra economía por la pandemia del COVID-19. Como ustedes podrán entender, pues muchos hemos perdido nuestro trabajo, muchos estamos sin trabajar, y al subirnos las rentas, al subiendo los costos de la renta, hace que la calidad de vida de nosotros, los que no estamos trabajando, nos veamos sumamente afectados. Por eso muchos hemos tenido que solicitar o aplicar el pago de rentas atrasadas para poder cumplir con nuestras obligaciones. Creemos, y creo, y yo estoy convencido de que no se pueden subir por el momento los pagos de la renta y que debe haber una moratoria en relación a estos temas que se pretende subir por parte de autoridades para que los dueños de casa sean los beneficiarios de esta subida de la renta. Esta es mi intervención, y estoy presto para cualquier inquietud en el panel siguiente.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I see that Lesvia Mendez is back. If you can unmute yourself?
Yes, I unmute myself.
That's great. We don't see you. If you want to put on your camera, you're welcome to.
It's all right. Time is of essence.
Okay, your testimony is welcome now. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a minute. Where is my page? I lost my page. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Good evening. My name is Lesvia Mendez. I live in Amherst, and I have lived in my apartment for the last 30 years. Again, my concern is that I am retired on a fixed income. As you know, Social Security give you a few dollars, almost nothing. But they continue raising Medicare. Also, landlords are allowing to continue increasing our rents with all kinds of NCIs. I'm sorry. All kinds of NCIs to improve their property. I repeat, to improve their property. Just what they are doing in New York City. Remember? Many families have to share apartments in order to be able to pay their rents. Some are out in shelters, and also many are roaming the streets with all their belongings. Please, when you are going to cast your final vote, think how many people are going to be affected by your decision. Also, let's not forget, especially this pandemic year, people are still trying to find, to put their house in order. The pandemic is not finished, and thousands of people still do not have a job. Have mercy. Whatever increase you are asking is unfair. Millions of people don't have that money. Remember the love one that they have lost. Please, have mercy.
Thank you for your testimony. I saw another, oh, I see. I think it's Kaia Westbrook.
Actually, my name is Andrea Grand Capone. My daughter, and this is her account that she uses for her school Zooms, so I apologize.
It's okay. I'm hearing some. Andrea, just wait one second. Okay, we're good to go. Kaia, I'm sorry, Andrea, please, the floor is yours.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrea, and I'm a single mother to a seven-year-old daughter. We live in a rent-stabilized apartment in the Cobble Hill section of Brooklyn. My daughter attends a really excellent public school that it took us three years to get into, off the waitlist, and it's walking distance to our home in a very safe, wonderful neighborhood. I managed to get a rent-stable lease in this neighborhood in 2004, and I've lived there since then, and my daughters lived in the apartment for her entire life. In October of 2019, our building was acquired by some owners who have basically managed to dislodge almost all of the rent-stabilized tenants through ongoing construction projects that I feel have been unnecessarily prolonged. My daughter has asthma, and I was forced to move her temporarily to live with her grandmother because the construction dust was a problem. I've made multiple city complaints. The landlord completely denies there's an issue, even though there's been lead found in the construction dust, and they are now trying to evict us, even though I have been completely current on my rent throughout the entire COVID-19 pandemic. I work in the film and television industry, which was largely shut down due to the pandemic, and I still, under the crushing strain of unemployment, managed to pay my rent every single month. I just wanted to say that a rent increase at this time would put an unnecessary strain and undermine the stability and the homes of the most vulnerable among us. And in times of crisis, we should be protecting and safeguarding the most vulnerable among us, including the economically disadvantaged, the elderly, women, and people of color, all of whom have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic.
Thank you for your testimony. I see Flor Moran. Moran is our next speaker. Flor, you are muted, and your camera's not on if you want your camera on.
She is also testifying in Spanish. Translation to help me.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Flor Moran. Vivo en el 434 de la 61, apartamento 1 de Enzo Sepa, Brooklyn. Hoy vengo a testificar para poder darles mi punto de vista, el por qué no estoy de acuerdo con que aumente nuestro alquiler. Actualmente, mi esposo es el único que trabaja. Yo no estoy trabajando ahora porque debo quedarme en casa para cuidar a mis hijos hasta que las escuelas vuelvan a abrir en persona. Los ingresos de mi esposo no son suficientes para cubrir todos nuestros gastos. Es difícil ponernos al día con el presente costo de vida. Estamos pagando más por alimentos, luz, gasolina, ropa, y otras necesidades. Se imaginan si tuviéramos que pagar más por el alquiler? Mi esposo tuvo COVID, y durante mucho tiempo no pudo trabajar. Todos nuestros ahorros se han ido en pagos para alquiler, alimentos, los servicios públicos, y todas las demás necesidades. Nuestra situación nos tiene preocupados y nos mantiene despiertos toda la noche. Por estas razones, les pido que consideren todos estos problemas de los inquilinos antes de votar en aumentar nuestra renta. Yo pido, no solo para mi familia, sino también para el resto de los inquilinos que viven en las mismas condiciones. Escuchen nuestras necesidades y preocupaciones, y ayuden a todos los inquilinos de la ciudad de Nueva York en votar 0%, no solo por un año, sino por dos años. Gracias por escucharme, y buenas noches.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker has a phone number ending 105. If they could press star six to unmute themselves, we could hear their testimony, and if someone could translate that, that would be great.
Aló, buenas tardes. La persona que tiene el número telefónico que termina 105 no lo podemos escuchar. Para activar su micrófono, por favor, dale la tecla del asterisco y el número seis. De nuevo, tecla del asterisco y el número seis. Gracias.
Andrew, do you want to promote someone also, just as we work through these technical issues? This person is ready. Yes. Yes, a person ending with phone 105, we would like to know your name and would like to listen to your testimony.
Persona con el teléfono que termina 105, por favor, diganos su nombre y apellido y queremos escuchar su testimonio.
You're unmuted, but we can hear you. But if you can talk, we're ready to listen.
This is Lena Melendez.
Lena Melendez? We can't hear you. You're unmuted, but we can hear you.
Señora Melendez, su micrófono está activado, pero no la podemos escuchar.
Andrew, do you want to promote someone else and we'll circle back to Lena Melendez? Lena, can you hear us?
Señora Melendez, ¿nos puedes escuchar?
I'm gonna reach out to her.
Okay, so then we'll turn right now to Pilar de Jesús. If you want to unmute yourself and if you want to put on your camera, we're ready to hear your testimony. Pilar?
Señora Pilar de Jesús, si usted quiere prender su micrófono, activarlo y dar su testimonio, estamos listos para escucharla.
Sorry, guys.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name is Pilar de Jesús. I'm the senior advocacy coordinator at Take Rejustice. That is Quim, my sidekick. And I'm here to testify not only as a senior advocacy coordinator in the tenant unit at Take Rejustice, but also as a tenant. And because my time is limited, because, one, we have limited hearings, which is, my opinion is pretty bad given the number of tenants that, rent-stabilized tenants that live in this city and should be having access to this meeting. But I just wanted to say some of these words that, for me, in my opinion, they're not going to be nice words. They help me think when people are talking here about rent increases. I think about death. I think about violence. I think about the mental health, the instability that these discussions are causing the humans that are living in these housings that before this catastrophe, because people use the word pandemic and crisis, but in my opinion, this was a catastrophe. This is something I've never seen in the 40 years that I've existed on this planet and in the 60-something years that my mom has lived here. And it's just really... Like, I don't know what word to use to say how you, as the board, especially members who even are considering a rent increase, to what's violence that's going to cause the tenants? Do you see the unhealthy mental instability we have going on in this city with the homeless crisis, the homeless catastrophe we have going on in this city? So is it that that's what you want to do? Add more violence to this city? And it seems like that. And the landlords here who are complaining broke, like I'm with my other folks, open your books. I know for a fact that before this catastrophe, many of these landlords have been using money to pay for people to harass my tenants, especially the undocumented tenants, pretend like they were ICE so that they could violently, in my opinion, be doing what we call domestic terrorism to our tenants. So I'm just going to end on this. Please, really consider what harm you're causing to the mental health of New Yorkers.
Thank you for your testimony, Pilar.
Lena can go next. She's on.
I'm sorry, on 105?
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Sheila, what's the name?
Mendez. Lena Mendez.
Lena, we're ready to hear your testimony if you unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Lena Melendez and I am a member of the Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association. For decades, landlords have raised rents illegally using IAIs, where landlords don't have to produce a single receipt and no inspectors ever came to check if those renovations were done. Most of those rents have not been lowered back to where they should be. You can't find an apartment in New York City under $1,600. Imagine trying to scrape together $1,600 if you're earning minimum wage. The reality is that rents go up, yet wages don't go up. The rezonification of low-income neighborhoods keep producing unaffordable rents and a net loss of rent-stabilized units instead of the affordable units they're supposed to add. We are not fully economically recovered from the COVID-19 pandemic. Many businesses did not survive and those jobs are gone, leaving many to struggle searching for work still. Tenants who are backed up on rents are having a hard time navigating the emergency rental assistance program online. It didn't work the first time that rental assistance was made, where people had to do it online. And it's not, it's really difficult to do it online now. Uploading documents, people can't navigate the system online. It's, most of the time, it crashes, you can't get through. It's a mess. But I'm worried that once the eviction moratorium is lifted, we will see the true devastation of this pandemic. For these reasons, we are calling for a 5% rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Paloma Lara, you're muted and your camera's off in case you want to turn it on.
Hi. Hola. Me pueden escuchar? No sé cómo quitar mi... No sé cómo abrir...
Yes, we can hear you.
...prender mi... No sé cómo prender mi cámara.
I don't know how to turn on my camera.
That's okay.
Yeah, okay. Pues perfecto. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Paloma Lara. Vivo en Washington Heights, una comunidad de mayoría inmigrantes, especialmente dominicanos. Esta comunidad tiene la mayor cantidad de apartamentos estabilizados en el condado de Nueva York. También es una de las comunidades que ha sido más traumatizada por el COVID-19. Han habido muchas muertes, muchas personas infectadas y muchas personas que han perdido su trabajo o que van, que han rebajado su sueldo. Este no es el momento de subir la renta. Al aumentar el alquiler, esto prejudica a las familias negras y latinas. Un aumento de alquiler dará hogar para nosotros, para el desalojo. Llevará a la persona a decidir entre poner comida en la mesa o pagar el alquiler. Más importante, sabemos que nadie va a desear que lo desalojen de su vivienda y que puede hacer que muchas familias que están tomando en cuenta o vivir en la calle o quedarse en su apartamento puedan al mismo tiempo también pedir por diferentes loans para ellos poder pagar la renta y entonces pagar más interés y ahogar más su vida y a su familia cuando tienes que ver con su dinero, con su vida. Y más importante, yo creo que Pilar, quien habló anterior a mí, lo que debemos entender que esto es una tragedia, que nuestra comunidad han sido súper afectada por lo que está pasando en esta comunidad y que no es el tiempo de subir el alquiler, que es el tiempo de darle a nuestra comunidad en el tiempo que yo más han sufrido.
Thank you for your testimony. I see Amy Collado. If you want to unmute and if you want to put on your camera, that'd be great. And Andrew, if you want to bring someone up on deck, that'd be great too. Amy, we're ready to hear you.
Hi, I'm not sure. There we go. Okay.
We see you and we hear you.
Thank you. Okay, hi. My name is Amy Collado. I'm a tenant organizer, small business owner and rent-stabilized tenant. During this pandemic, I became head of household since my partner's independent record label and the entire music industry came to a full stop. I also needed to support my family, such as my sister, with groceries since my 11-year-old niece began learning remotely and for my mother who couldn't afford to sustain herself on her fixed income and being afraid to go outside. Additionally, many of the tenants I work with continue to remain rent burdened even since finding jobs. I've personally helped many pay the internet bills so that they can continue to stay connected. I share this to continue to paint the reality of who continues to remain mostly impacted. By now, we've all noticed that the RSA and Rebne's sad attempt to organize and strategically put forward the small landlord story to show a very minority experience. I just want to remind everyone that before 2020, landlords had experienced profits of over 40% for more than 13 years consecutively. We know that a majority of NYC landlords are corporations with huge portfolios. Even before the pandemic, I worked with buildings who were part of the alternative enforcement program, where each year 200 buildings are listed as hazardous and in disrepair. Many listed as small and none who had used any of their profits to maintain their buildings back then. Each year, we hear landlords complaining of hardship and do very little to maintain their buildings, even when they do see increases. A landlord mentioned $9 being nothing, but to a hard-working tenant barely making ends meet, $9 is a metro car to and from work or to pick up their kid from childcare. $9 can mean an extra carton of food, of eggs, of bread and a carton of milk a month. We ask that this board not consider the reality of, to consider the reality of us struggling tenants and not the 2% and 3% proposed by landlords. We call for no increases. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I think our next speaker is Adina Marmelstein. Adina, you're muted and your camera's not on if you want to put it on. Adina, you're still muted. Oh, there's two Adinas now. There we go. We see you.
Yeah, just...
Hello.
If you change.
So, Adina, we hear some feedback. Do you have two devices on right now? I think that's better.
I think that's better.
Still feedback.
Yes, I'm just trying to... When you got me on, you changed my host screen by... I'm trying to get my screen back.
We see you. So if you want to testify, we see you and hear you if you want to testify.
No, but my documents only got covered because the screen... Wait, let me get out of one device. That's the only way I'm going to...
Double-click on the screen. It should get smaller.
Sheila, you should run a technical consulting company, I think.
Any organizer in the city has been supporting folks with technology throughout this pandemic, so we've learned a lot of tools of the trade. Adina seems to be frozen on my screen.
Yeah, I think you're frozen. I don't know if that's a reflection of your internet or something else. I'm not sure. Andrew, do you want to promote someone else in the interim?
Yeah, sure. Let me, I'm going to go back.
Adina, if you can hear me, you might want to just testify with your voice and not use your video. Possibly that'll make it easier.
What number are we up to now?
I'm going to, Sheila, I'm going to call on Mahfouzul Islam while we get that information.
We're generally in the 70s.
Mahfouzul Islam, can you hear me? And we're ready to listen to your testimony. It looks like you're not muted, so we're ready to hear you.
Hi, my name is Mahfouzul Islam. I'm a tenant organizer with Chaya CDC. I've been working with tenants for quite a while now and I've been hearing all the hardships they've been going through. I see that this is a difficult time for everybody, but considering the circumstances of where landlords are able to compensate for the losses from the last year through ERAP, tenants need a break for themselves in this situation. So from our end, from the experience that we've gotten and hearing the hardship of all the tenants from this past year, we believe that a rollback would be great for the tenants and if possible, you know, if not, a freeze, a rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm trying Adina again, hopefully.
Sure, that sounds good. Adina, if you, we...
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. I know everything about tech, but for some reason, anyway, when you put me on, it just blocked my screen. Thank you. My name is Adina Marmelstein. Grew up Greenwich Village, lived entirely Upper West Side. My apartment, 360 Central Park West, for the 31 years. Landlord ruined our lives, always living in fear of eviction, loss of home and possession. As a child, my dad died landlord through all our possessions on the street. $50 monthly, nothing to do with non-payment. We shouldn't live to live like this in the greatest city in the greatest country. 1990, my sister and I signed a lease together and after we moved in landlord wiped my name off the lease. No real lease ever in my name. The landlord got all the rent increases without a lease and that's a violation of RBG and DHCR guidelines. 31 years fighting their court and legal proceedings to save my apartment and senior who lives with me forced in 2019 to sign it stipulation. Judge Ruth Carol Feiman said, "If I don't sign it, I'll be evicted, pay landlord $86,000 rears." They claim attorney fees and interest. Landlord created rears by not accepting some rent and no lease, thus powerless. We are going to be evicted, end of the memorandum, August 31st. Our beloved home view Hudson River, New Jersey, tenants have no power. We are the fabric of the good neighbors and people of New York. Relied on government, reduced electricity eligible, but couldn't get COVID rental or cash assistance. Our landlords and park realty owns 33 apartments in Manhattan and 100 in New York City. Landlords do not suffer, big or small. New Yorkers spend their lives fighting to keep their homes. Many 20-year-olds have moved dozens of times and landlords' favorites in courts, boards, lawyers have money for representation to fight for increases. We represent to you, all is fair and democratic, but our homes are in constant jeopardy where we navigate our lives. 300,000, 30% Upper West Side's moved out during the pandemic, who can keep apartments when you can't afford and pay rent. Landlords got their rents in COVID, bills didn't stop for all who couldn't and still can't pay rent because there's no jobs, rising prices, struggling to make our homes payments. Unemployment rate is only based on receiving unemployment. Leaved on COVID food, help, paid rent from UI stimulus package use, below poverty level, aging, our world not open. For rent board has given landlords increased so long, landlords get taxes off, building repairs, construction, MCI. We have no power, but to pay our rent without repairs, no party. Our roof over our heads is our party begging board. No rent increases. We need a lot more than this, not to be kicked out and have rights to live in our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Thank you. So I didn't kind of pre-clear this with the board, but it's past eight. I'm thinking a 10-minute break is in order. Do I, do I... Okay, so we're not going to end the meeting, but let's all just... We'll mute ourselves and put on, our cameras on mute as well. For those in attendance, we will be back in 10 minutes, which is at 8:13, and we look forward to hearing your testimony at that time. Thank you.
Vamos a tomar un descanso de diez minutitos, por favor. Actualmente son las 8:03 de la tarde. Volvemos a las 8:13 de la tarde. Por favor, pueden dejar sus teléfonos en modo y vamos a apagar las cámaras. Regresamos a las 8:13 de la tarde o noche. Gracias.
Okay, members, it's eight thirteen. And if you turn on your camera, just so we know that we're all here, that'd be great. Well, I know Christine and I are here.
Yeah.
And Robert and Scott and Alex and Leah and Shayla and Andrew, most importantly, and Celia.
David.
All right, I think it's critical masses. Andrew, to proceed, is that right?
Yeah, I think that's good. Maybe it's a good time to just reread that announcement about Spanish folks who would like to call in and give that information out, so if old and our list can read that for folks, that'd be great.
Very well.
Okay, I think we're ready for our next person to testify. Okay, I see we have Hillary Beresweta.
Yeah, it could be Jennifer, actually.
It could be Jennifer. So the person whose name says Hillary is a person actually named Jennifer? Is that what you're telling me, Andrew? You're muted. Yes.
Yeah, maybe she signed up. It's the same last name, but she signed up as.
Jennifer Beresweta, unmute yourself. And Andrew, if you could bring someone up on deck. Jennifer, you're still muted.
Okay, yeah.
We hear you.
Le escuchamos, señora. Puede declarar.
Sí. Buenas noches, primeramente a todos y a toda la junta. Testimonio es que no estamos de acuerdo, principalmente por mí y por todos los que necesitamos aquí en la ciudad de Nueva York, que nos suban la renta porque estamos pasando por este COVID, por esta pandemia, como todos sabemos. Uno, todos han quedado sin trabajo, estamos sin poder como pagar nuestros servicios, nuestra renta, alimentación para nuestros niños. Y otra también, yo soy una persona que pasé un accidente en el dos mil diecinueve y regresé a casa casi a los ocho meses de este año, dos mil veinte, perdón, que regresé a casa del dos mil diecinueve. Mi accidente fue fuerte. Yo no he trabajado desde esa fecha hasta el día de hoy y no es justo que uno no, que le suban la renta porque yo no estoy trabajando, no tengo como pagar más. Yo soy padre y madre para mis hijas. El único dinero que ha entrado aquí es de mi trabajo y pues yo no sé cómo es que uno va a pagar si a uno le suben la renta. Eso es que, y que se toque el corazón, la gente, todos, que no es justo que nos suban la renta a nosotros.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I believe our next speaker is Emmanuel Youssef. Emmanuel, welcome.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Evening.
Well, like I told you before, it is nice to have some kind of, something to present evidence because nothing changed in my building. My name is Emmanuel Youssef and I represent eleven eleven Gerard Avenue. Hello.
We're here. We can hear you.
Okay, eleven eleven Gerard Avenue. I've been living here for about twenty-five years and there is nothing changed. If you can see, we have some kind of numbers to the building. We have D minus or something like that. So the landlord is not taking care of the building. And again, I want you guys to please consider what is going on in New York City here. Before the pandemic, people are really sick and tired of all these increases in the rent. Why the landlord, they are having fun. Well, I do not say this one with any kind of prejudice or something like that, but that's what is happening. Please, people are getting very, very tired and angry. Look at what is going on. People are becoming sick. I don't know what is going on in New York City. We don't want New York City to become a city of zombies because innocent people have been kicked here and there, senior citizens and everybody. I am having a problem paying my rent because I am just on social security. So before I pay my medication and everything else, I have nothing else. And I'm begging you to roll back the rent for five percent at least so that everybody will be able to even have a little smile and confidence in you guys. And I believe that you see what is going on passionately. I cry sometimes when I see innocent people being kicked here and there.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think our next speaker is Eleanor Campos. Welcome.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Eleanor Campos. Resido en El Bronx. En la actualidad vivo con mis tres hijos y mi madre de setenta y seis años. Mi testimonio es para expresar mi oposición a que sea aumentada la renta. En mi caso particular, la pandemia me afectó a mí y a mi familia, ya que a principios de la pandemia fui enviada a casa y lamentablemente para noviembre perdí mi trabajo. Esto nos ha afectado, ya uniendo al costo o aumento de lo que son la canasta familiar y los gastos de la familia, nuestro casero al no poder cumplir por la pérdida de mi trabajo, con los compromisos de la renta, pues ha decidido llevarnos a corte, lo cual nos ha afectado directamente. En la actualidad, empecé un empleo de medio tiempo y no es suficiente para poder cubrir con todos los gastos. Temo y mi familia tenemos que al pasar la moratoria de desalojos, pues seamos echados a la calle por no poder cumplir. Queremos trabajar, pero esto nos ha afectado. Entiendo que no es el momento propicio para aumentar la renta, ya que estamos pasando situaciones difíciles. No solo yo, yo represento solo una persona de muchos que estamos atravesando esta difícil situación. Entiendo que nosotros como inquilinos necesitamos soluciones. Necesitamos que se nos ayude más bien a poder reintegrarnos, a trabajar, para poder cumplir con nuestros compromisos. Pero la pandemia nos ha afectado grandemente, inclusive nosotros como parte vulnerable de.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Felix Cortijo. Felix, you're muted.
Muted. You can see me now?
We can't see, we can hear you, but we can't see you if you want to turn on your camera.
Camera, this light? I don't know how you mess with this camera.
Turn the camera on. It's nice if you can, but it's not necessary.
Okay, it's not necessary. Great. Well, I hope that the rent guidelines board listens to all the testimonies that have been given out by all these tenants. They suffer in a lot. It's not, it's not fair that the rent guidelines board would raise the rent to them. You're doing, you're doing very well, Mr. Rice. The rent guidelines board should have brought their own interpreters instead of bringing that also to the tenants to bring the interpreters. It's definitely inhumane for them to, let's change the script. Let's change it. Let's see if it was you who was over here asking us, asking us for help and for assistance. Would you, would you do that? I mean, you would be the one in need and we're the ones that we decided whether you needed or not. I'm just a community resident in the neighborhood and I understand what some of the tenants are going through. A lot of these buildings need repairs. That's what the tenants complain about. Not just that they increase in the rent because I tell them, I tell them, listen, you could run the building on your own rents. You don't need anybody else to tell you how much you're hiring or whatever. You could take all that rent and run your own building. Okay, now, many, again, many apartments need repairs, like for example me. My floor is all wood and it squeaks and I have a problem with my, the guy underneath me, he want to kill me. Well, you know, landlord, fix the floor. Fix the floor, you know, and if you come around and you've been living for, doing it for twenty-something years, just like, just like I have been and many other tenants have, you see the depreciation.
Thank you.
No, 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 no. Okay, thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is phone number ending four nine seven. Andrew, do we have a name for that person?
It's Irvin.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Irvin Bennett.
Irvin Bennett. You're muted. If you press star six, you can unmute yourself.
Are you hearing me now?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Irvin Bennett. I live at two one five East One Sixty Fourth Street. We passed thirty years. My landlord is Einstein. My landlord is Einstein Associates. I live in my apartment for 30 years. We never seen a pandemic like this before in this country. In New York, we have thousands of dead in the Bronx. We are the income runner of debt. The landlords don't make repairs, but they are working on their building. In my community, as I speak, you have four buildings where you have stuff around them, where they are working on roof. Black, even my building, they install 40 cameras. You know that's a, I'm, I'm, I'm MCI coming. Where you can't about it, because the landlord thinks how to make money, where you, the board, have nothing to do about. What you have to something about is to roll back rent. We have seen where the dead income runner have died. Our children lose their parents. Our children lose their grandparents. They can't afford them to lose their community also. You have something to do about that. You can make our children save the community. You can stay in their school. You can stay in, in, in their home they're living to now by rolling back rent, where the children can stay, where we don't have the pandemic of losing people that is in outer street. Losing their homes. I've paid over 40% of my, of my income rent. Please do something to help, help us. You only one can help us now. We are rolling back the rent and save our community, save our community, save our community, save the city of New York by rolling back rent. Where people stay in their homes, where people can together once more and save their homes. Please, by rolling back rent.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Our next speaker is George Soderoff. George, hey, welcome.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Rent Guidelines Board, how many of you have lost your employment because of COVID-19? No hands? How many of you are rent burdened? No hands? How many of you will be victimized by the predatory landlord industry's attempt to evict 1.4 million rent stabilized tenants once the rent moratorium is lifted? Still no hands? How many of you empathize with the rent burden? Oh, two hands. How many of you understand just how detrimental to society are the aims of the predatory landlord industry? Same two hands? How many of you believe that people generally are aware that before becoming president, Donald Trump secured 88 and a half million dollars in subsidies and tax breaks to build luxury housing for the rich of New York City? What's wrong with this picture? Have we completely lost it as a society? It certainly appears so. If your counterargument is concern for the small landlord, then how many of you are willing to guarantee a 10% profit to any landlord willing to open his books? Do I see any hands? If not, why not? A guaranteed profit of 10% should be irresistible to anyone crying honestly of pecuniary strangulation. You know perfectly well that every single landlord, big or small, is going to fight like a Trump to conceal his financial records from frying eyes. Ladies and gentlemen, not one of you is president of the United States. None of you is governor of the great state of New York. Not a one of you is mayor of this vibrant and exciting city. Not one of you has any of those kinds of power. But with the little bit of power that you do have here, you can and you must do the right thing and vote for a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Can I make a quick announcement?
Yeah.
I just want to reiterate the issue where your name needs to match the name that we're looking for. And maybe you're sharing a Zoom account on a computer. Maybe you don't realize it's just your first name. There's someone with their hand up with the initials MS. We do not have you on the pre-registration list. If you are pre-registered and that's why your hand is up, please email to the email address that got in touch with you. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. I think our next speaker is Glorabelle Castillo. Glorabelle, I think you're unmuted, but your camera's off if you want to put it on.
Sure.
Welcome.
Hello. Okay, so my name is Glorabelle Castillo and I live in the Bronx and I'm a casa leader. And this is what I have to say. I'm here today to tell you about my problems not paying rent for three months. First, the pandemic has ruined everyone's life, everyone's life, me as a single parent. I am very angry and scared. Well, this, well, it's not the same when you're working and getting your salary. Sorry, that you can manage your bills. You can manage your bill. Now I am unemployed, independent with $703, which is a nightmare because my rent is 1362. The money is not enough to pay my bills, to pay my bills, like the internet for my daughter's school and my food and credit cards. On April, I received my daughter's college tuition payment right in March with the amount of $7,850, in which I paid half. By August, first, I have to pay the other half. RDB, please help us. Help us. My child, first comes my child than the rent. Please do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Gabriela Carrera.
Hi, my name is.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Hi, my name is Gabriela Carrera. I'm with Movement for Justice in El Barrio. At Tuesday's public hearing, our member Belén Sanchez, a monolingual Spanish-speaking immigrant woman of color, had taken time off work to testify to your board, but she was not provided with an English interpreter on neither Zoom nor YouTube, and the public was unable to understand her testimony. The same problem occurred last year when another member of our organization and an essential worker gave testimony in Spanish at one of your hearings. This caused us to submit a written complaint to your board, which apparently was ignored because the problem persists a year later. The voices of immigrant women that are essential workers need to be heard by everyone and not muffled. We ask again that you change the way you organize these hearings to demonstrate the respect non-English speaking tenants deserve and so that their struggles may be understood by all. I will now read Belén's testimony in English and ask that you provide us with her full two minutes so that this time her voice may be understood by all. My name is Belén Sanchez and I'm a member of Movement for Justice in El Barrio. And we do not want you to vote in favor of the rent increase. We had certain problems as a result of the pandemic. We were left without jobs, without food, nutritional necessities. We were unable to pay for Metro cards. We have children in our homes and we do not have the means to buy the milk and diapers. The pandemic has affected us to such an extent that it has left us without wages and our rent accumulated for the majority of us who are low income. Therefore, if you all vote in favor of rent increases, the only thing you will be giving rise to is that overdue rent payments continue to accumulate. We trust that you will make the best decision to support the community that is most affected.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker has not been promoted yet. I believe our next speaker is Imelda Vázquez. Imelda, if you unmute yourself and if you want to put on your camera.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is, mi nombre es Imelda Vázquez. Vivo en 115 McClellan Street, apartamento 21A, y estoy aquí con casa. Durante la pandemia de COVID-19, perdí mi trabajo. Soy madre soltera de dos hijos menores de edad. Debo aproximadamente siete mil dólares en alquiler, más gastos de luz, internet y gastos básicos de casa. El moratorio de desalojo se termina el 31 de agosto y estoy preocupada. No puedo pagar otro aumento de renta ya que me es imposible dado que solo trabajo part-time. La primera ayuda que el gobierno ofreció ha sido traumatizante y frustrante para muchos de nosotros, ya que no nos han dado ese apoyo. Durante la pandemia, los dueños nos negaron servicios básicos en donde nuestra dignidad fue pisoteada. Hemos pagado la renta mes a mes y esta situación de falta de pago es comprobada dada la pandemia. La renta en este momento no puede ser aumentada. No queremos eso. Necesitamos una reducción de renta y no un aumento de renta. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Someone with phone number ending 866, I believe that is Andrés Vargas. If you hit star six, we could, welcome, please testify.
La persona con el teléfono 866, Andrés Vargas adelante, puede declarar caballero.
Hi, welcome, please testify.
Le escuchamos, puede declarar.
Okay, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Andrés Vargas. Vivo en el 1050 Caro Place. Aquí en el Bronx. Quiero testificar hoy porque la pandemia me ha afectado muchísimo desde el año pasado. Y no soy el único. Somos muchos los neoyorkinos que somos afectados, que pasamos sobre esa situación. El año pasado casi no trabajé todo el año. Y este año también porque la ciudad de Nueva York no se ha recuperado. La renta ya es, está muy cara hasta para mudarse a otro apartamento. Si ustedes deciden subir la renta, no habrá apartamentos accesibles que uno pueda pagar. Y también otros gastos están muy caros ahorita, como los, la comida en los supermercados y otras, los transportes supuestamente van a subir. Todavía no, nos hemos recuperado de la pandemia del COVID. Y uno, soy, yo no soy la única persona que ha sufrido de esto. Hay miles de neoyorkinos, como lo repito, que han sufrido por los últimos, por último, el dueño de mi edificio no nos ha considerado en nada con la situación que estamos pasando. Solo piensan en el dinero, que debemos, aunque el dueño de más de 50 edificios en la ciudad. Les pido de por favor, se pongan en nuestro lugar y que no suban la renta como el año pasado. Y así, el año pasado se friso y ojalá que esta siga siendo así. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Marilyn Mullins. Marilyn, if you could unmute and if you want to put on your camera, that'd be great. Marilyn?
Yes, okay, hello.
Hi, we can hear you. If you want to turn on your camera, that'd be great too, but it's not.
Give it a shot. Um, okay. I don't know how to start my cam. Could you start my camera for me? Okay, oh, okay. Here, start this video for me. What, you know what? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Hello, my name is Marilyn Mullins and I'm a casa leader. I live at 1072 Woodycrest Avenue, high bridge section of the Bronx for 39 years. My landlord is David Einstein. COVID have impacted us all. The way I was impacted was by my landlord harassing me for my share of the rent and Section 8 shared the rent. He wrote a letter on April 22nd stating that I had 14 days to pay my share of the rent and Section 8 shared the rent. The amount had to be paid in full. The letter was given to me by superintendent on April 24th, which I know by then the court was not open. The amount was 1,788,099 cent. I didn't have the amount to give him, but by being with Casa, I knew a little, I knew a little something. I would have to choose between paying my rent and my utility bills and buying medicine. We don't need another rent increase. We need a rent rollback. I have major violations in my apartment, which the landlord takes no consideration of giving me no service at no time. I fell in my bathroom. As of next month, I'm supposed to have surgery. My landlord have not reached out to me, but that's all right. It's all good too. My landlord had put paperwork in for MCI.
Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. I think Richard Washington is our next speaker. Richard, you're muted. Okay, great. And if you want to unmute, put on your camera, that'd be great too.
Don't see where I can.
No worries.
Okay, well, I want to give my testimony. How are you doing today? I feel like there should be a rollback on rent because yes, a lot of people have experienced hardship during the COVID pandemic, but there are a lot of conditions that happened pre-COVID pandemic where there mold, holes in the walls, ceilings falling down. And then you expect people to still continue to pay rent, especially now when they've lost their jobs and they can barely pay. And I can speak from experiences. One woman in my building, she's a senior citizen. She had a fire in her apartment and her wall is completely damaged and all the electrical systems are illegal in the building. And the landlords still won't fix it. And from all the testimonies I've been hearing, a landlord saying that their costs went up, this and that. You know what? This is not the job for you. Sell your building because you need to provide safe, clean, updated and approved apartments to all rent stabilized tenants, no matter what. End of story.
Thank you for your testimony.
Testimonial.
Next speaker is Ruth Rodriguez. Ruth, you're muted, Ruth. Okay, you're unmuted now. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Ruth Rodriguez. I am retired and I feel really grateful that I'm retired and that I am not facing what my fellow tenants are facing, having to trade, raise children, worry about bills, face the prospect of homelessness, illness, losing friends and relatives. And now they owe thousands of dollars. What other goods or services are we expected to pay for when we don't receive them? And the tenants of New York City, many of us, we've been subsidizing landlords by fixing our own repairs for years, you know, and I used to do that when I didn't know my rights. But people owe thousands of dollars. Already we're seeing so many people homeless on the street. You look at some of them and they look okay, but they haven't had a haircut and they have a shopping cart and they could be any one of us or any one of our children. And we're in this together. This pandemic has affected the whole country. And as New Yorkers, we should be shouldering the burden, not, not, not making it profitable for some while others of us have to pay the share that the landlords and other New Yorkers should be, should be shouldering. This is a worldwide tragedy, but it affects individuals, you know, families. My neighbor, Imelda, just spoke. Most people don't speak up, you know, some people just kind of go their way. They're evicted, they go. At least now we have some representation in our building and we've been fighting for our rights. We need rents forgiven and lowered, not raised.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next person is on the phone. I think they're unmuted. And if you could just say your name, that would be great.
Mercedes Escondo. Can you hear me?
can you hear me
yes welcome and we look forward to your testimony
hi yes hello to all you know I live in eleven eighty-seven Anderson Avenue in the Bronx and I would like the rent not to be increased because of the after the pandemic we all were hurt to the maximum I I was unable to pay my rent I work I'm a city worker and with my with my income I was unable to pay my rent like before when before the covid happened and I I was also my family my mother she's bed bound after having covid one of my sons too and most of my income went to you know buy to buy medicine and food and other stuff because I don't receive any outside benefits any resources and I will beg you to please help us unless instead of being a part of the problem please be a part of the solution and help us stay healthy and continue to you know to help us get you know live a better life with our family that I would be greatly appreciated if if you guys just help us and we can all live in peace together we can we can keep an open mind we can come to terms of what can we do to you know to come to a good term instead of heading us you know help us please and God bless you all let's get open your mind and have have you know we could we could be part of your family you never know we all we need all the help that we can get from you guys and I think that we can we can everything will work for the best if we all think put our heads together God bless you all thank you for listening thank you bye bye
thank you for your testimony
David just really quick there is a Robert with his hand up I just want to allow him to talk and ask his last name
great
Robert
yes that's me Robert gums
okay
can I speak
you can speak go ahead
yeah listen I'm a I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak here but quite frankly I think the premise of this whole thing is a bit ridiculous now somebody else had mentioned this earlier I'm on the bus but I've been listening to just about this whole thing we have finished and not even finished yet technically but we have gone through a worldwide pandemic and I see the first thing that the landlords worrying about is their rent now if somebody calls them a group of you know spiteful greedy you know little mice they get offended but what else would you call them a small group of people that want to take advantage of their fellow human beings after one of history's greatest tragedies I don't understand why we're even discussing this the whole rent is something to me the whole rent issue is something that should be talked about maybe next year all right or maybe a year and a half from now and the idea that people would even talk about even think about a rental increase that I don't understand what's happening to us as a society we don't it's like we lost all of our basic day-to-day morals to even bring up such a topic with a pandemic still raging okay I'm glad that it's gone down but this thing is still raging and to talk about this is ridiculous it's heartless and it's cruel thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak
thank you our next speaker is Maria Budrum Maria you're muted if you could unmute we see you so that's great but if you could just unmute that'd be great and we can listen to you
my name is Maria Budrum I'm a cast member and I live at eight 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 Grand Concourse in the Bronx I'm here today to ask the R G B not to give the landlord an increase the landlord we because of the pandemic the landlord is treating us really really bad right in a year and a half ago a lot of people had lost their jobs loved ones children we have to find food medicine I'm a retiree and the landlord harass me although I still pay his rent they send me to housing court and then they withdraw it I'm living off a pension and there's other seniors who is living after pension we have to pay between forty and sixty percent of our wages for rent food medicine and other necessity we are asking for a rent rollback and stop the harassment no repairs and if they do it's a sloppy job I want to ask one question of the R G B over the years we meet and it's the same thing the landlord need a rent do you ever considered visiting the poor neighborhood where black brown red white blue people live to see the condition they're living after the landlord do not need a rent increase this year the landlord get abatement from the government business loan let me finish let me finish they pay no interest we need a rent rollback we have people living in the train living on the street
thank you
with nowhere to go let me finish nowhere to go
Maria there's many other people after you just
you R G B give this landlord an increase in rent
a lot of people
you're not gonna be a tense city and one day you may wake up and see a saint rise in front of your house we need you to listen to us we are not animal and we are not living in a terrible country this is America one of the greatest country in the world but you and the landlord treat us like with nobody thank you
thank you for your testimony we're gonna move on to Nadia Mateer Nadia you're muted Nadia okay
yes hello you guys hear me
I can't see you but we can hear you
there you go
now we can see you
all right good evening all I love the last speaking by the way I will say this and I'll keep it short and sweet um we all want to talk about or the media has only been talking about the covid pandemic but let's talk about the pandemic previous to that the bad landlords pandemic that landlord has that pandemic has ruined and has affected tenants for decades let's talk about that pandemic let's talk about the bad service let's talk about the MCI's the IAIs which they've collected for decades so I don't want to hear this BS about we need money and for small-time landlords I do understand your hardship but if you took just this job you deal with the hardship like someone said earlier if you don't can't deal with it find a new job why don't you guys do what teachers do and and drive an Uber if you need money okay if you guys want to reward bad service this is what you're gonna do I want you guys that are okay for the or want the rent increase please go visit a restaurant and order your favorite food if there's a rat or roach in your food don't become a carrot or can and complain no 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 what you're gonna do is give that servicer a big fat tip because you believe that bad service should be rewarded so please give that servicer a big fat tip okay and I just want to say God bless to everyone stay safe and good night
thank you for your testimony I believe our next speaker is Agüeta Jones Guzman Agüeta Jones Guzman you're muted and your camera is not on he is a Spanish speaker so translation
señora Agueda por favor active su micrófono usted lo puede hacer dándole a la tecla del asterisco y el número seis y si quiere puede prender su cámara
all right I think I'm gonna oh yeah Agüeta Jones Guzman the floor is yours
señora Agueda puede hablar
estoy ya en vivo y me ves
sí señora no la vemos pero la escuchamos
yes yes we can
y vivo en el condado del Bronx uno de los condados más considerado más pobre de la ciudad de Nueva York y como maestra tuve la experiencia de poder ver a muchos padres llorar por no tener dinero para pagar sus rentas definitivamente hacer un aumento en este momento sería catastrófico estaríamos perdiendo muchas personas que tienen muchos deseos de un base de la ciudad de Nueva York debido a que están mirando una masa de una forma muy deprimente estamos pagando un alto costo en la renta y estamos viviendo en buenas condiciones de moro abre nadie nos está escuchando no nos arreglan no nos escuchan no podemos vivir en la ciudad de Nueva York en estas condiciones y creo que es el lugar donde más caros estamos pagando la 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 renta debido a esto creo que sería muy deprimente que no hagan un aumento muchísimas gracias
thank you for your testimony next we have Yama Lex Martinez you're muted unmuted now great and no camera if you care
hola buenas tardes
buenas tardes
mi nombre es Yama Lex Martinez soy miembro de casa y vivo en el diez cincuenta caro play yo no acepto un aumento de renta ya que hace poco llenamos una aplicación para alivio de renta para no perder nuestros apartamentos todavía hay muchas personas que como yo todavía no tenemos trabajo y dependemos del desempleo con lo poco que nos dan tenemos que pagar billes y hacer compra cuando vamos al súper enciendo el no traemos una compra completa creo que no estamos preparados para un aumento de renta sino una reducción de renta gracias
thank you for your testimony our next speaker is Fitzroy Christian welcome Fitzroy I think we lost him temporarily
the deceling froze
oh okay Andrew do you want to promote someone else in the in the interim
I just re-promoted there he is
Fitzroy can you hear me you're muted Fitzroy if you could unmute yourself that'd be great I think you're good
yeah I keep being kicked out I'm rejoining
are you good for now
okay my name is Fitzroy Christian the tenant in a rent stabilized apartment in the southwest Bronx I'm a cast leader and also a member of the rent justice coalition tonight my message to the rent guidelines board and in particular the public members is not just to demand a rent rollback but to alert you to the obvious consequences of your recent vote to increase rent during the global pandemic and in the ongoing economic crisis in New York City these are consequences you obviously wish hope to wish away but will be there when you get your collective heads out of the sun but this is what will happen tens if not hundreds of thousands of evicted New Yorkers will face severe illness from exposure to covid nineteen and a sizable amount of them will die in clear and simple terms if you insist on raising rent in our current unprecedented health and economic climate you'll be complicit in the violence of tens of thousands of evictions as well as condemning thousands upon thousands of already marginalized peoples of color and poor people of all races ethnicities and ages to known sickness and death that will be your legacy that will be your shame that will be your burden to carry the rest of your lives your delusional declarations that tenants have been helped by federal estate financial programs indicate that you are not willing to accept proof that the federal estate efforts are woefully insufficient and not universal in their coverage and will leave tenants no better off than they are when the pandemic started if you add rent increases to this burden already being carried by so many New Yorkers you're saying that you're willing to sacrifice people's lives in the pursuit of profit for stakeholders in an industry that traditionally realize more than forty cents in each dollar they invest you're saying that property and profits are to be prioritized over people you're saying that people who are poor and who have been racially and ethnically discriminated against for generations are deserve
so much for your testimony
I'm going to continue I'm just about finished if you give me a few more seconds please
okay sure
they deserve to suffer even more so that multimillionaires and billionaires can enhance their already overly luxurious stuffs you have the obligation to prevent poor marginalized and desperate people from a
Fitzroy
no human beings
our next speaker
homelessness hopelessness illness and death so that the rich can become even richer
Fitzroy
give us a rent rollback that is your obligation to the public of New York City
we need to move on to our next speakers thank you so much our next speaker is Yoselyn I believe I don't have a last name say it again
Yoselyn Gomez
Ms Gomez the floor is yours if you turn your
okay
estoy por aquí
welcome
no sé si te importa pero no te veo solamente te oimos
ay yo no soy de la cámara que no me vean das
okay no hay problema
okay buenas noches mi nombre es Yoselyn Gomez no voy a estar esta noche con ustedes hablando de pandemia porque la pandemia aquí son los landos de la ciudad de Nueva York comenzando por el mayor de esta de esta ciudad que es quien nos dirige la pandemia sí aquí son ustedes porque son ustedes porque ustedes saben por lo que estamos atravesando ustedes saben por lo que estamos viviendo cómo es que van a hablar de aumento de renta en estos momentos y aquí se le ocurre eso dígame usted lo que estén ahí sentado fue un año entero que los landos tuvieron cogiendo su dinero del covid rent release de este nuevo programa nunca hicieron reparaciones nunca hicieron nada y hoy quieren aumento de renta qué es lo que más quieren ustedes eh que no tiremos a la calle cuando hay cuatro mil y de pico de personas que están parados viendo todos días en el en el subway en la calle y donde quiera eso es lo que ustedes quieren que se aumente la gente durmiendo en la calle que los homeless de aquí de Nueva York se aumenten si es solo que ustedes quieren aumenten la renta póngale un diez por ciento si es solo que ustedes quieren ustedes quieren que tira esa renta no un cinco por ciento no un diez por ciento para atrapar nosotros poder sobrevivir aquí en la ciudad de Nueva York ese era mi testimonio esta noche muchas gracias
thank you for your testimony our next speaker is Judith Marshall Judith if you could unmute yourself star six Judith with phone ending two six zero if you could unmute yourself by pressing star six on your phone Andrew could you promote someone else if there's technical difficulties here all right I see Digna Ramirez as well if you could unmute yourself with star six that'd be great if that could be translated into Spanish
señora Digna si usted puede activar su micrófono dándole a la tecla del asterisco y después el número seis
me oye
yes we can hear you welcome yes we can thank you
hola hola mi nombre es Digna Samires vivo en el Bronx en el ocho ochenta y siete de Anderson Avenue este soy madre soltera con dos niños pequeños este y realmente el problema aquí es el aumento yo apenas puedo pagar la renta me quedé sin trabajo por culpa de la pandemia eh no me alcanza suficiente para pagar esta renta con timás para que cuando suban poder poder completar sería estaría homeless con mis hijos con mis dos hijos pequeños lo cual ese es mi mi miedo no creo que sea justo porque con todo lo que está pasando yo tenía trabajo estaba un poco estable toda esta pandemia vino a desequilibrarnos no tengo trabajo ahora mismo estoy en desempleo pero lo que me dan no es lo suficiente para yo poder pagar las rentas si las suben no me da para pagar esta con timás para poder pagar si suben la si suben la renta eh mi miedo es ese espero que sean conscientes que se pongan en los zapatos de los demás y sepan que como yo hay muchas madres ancianos personas que apenas en la casa tienen un solo trabajo y sepan que como yo hay muchas madres, ancianos, personas que apenas en la casa, tienen un solo trabajo para poder vivir la familia entera y creo que no es justo porque los landos se están haciendo de dinero, pero nosotros los inquilinos no, no tenemos como sobrevivir ahora. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Juanita Rodriguez. Juanita, welcome.
I'm here.
Welcome. Your camera is not on if you want to put your camera on.
Mi nombre es Juanita Rodríguez. You see you me? Usted me escucha? Escuchamos. Ah, mi nombre es Juanita Rodríguez y vivo en el 1515 de San Bernabéu, apartamento 671. Eh, mi testimonio es, soy miembro de casa. ¿Por qué van a subir la renta en este tiempo que estamos pasando por tantas, por tantos problemas? Los landos no arreglan los apartamentos, la... Hay muchas personas que ya están hongles y más esperando que los landos los tiren a la calle. ¿Por qué la ciudad deja y va a aumentar la renta en este momento? Este es un momento muy delicado para nuestro, para nuestra comunidad. Nuestra comunidad está pasando por tantas cosas como desequilibro mental, como enfermedades de la pandemia que me ha dejado y con tantas deudas de todo. La comida está alta. Ya la gente tiene que pensar si va a comer o va a pagar renta o va a pagar luz. ¿Por qué creen que nosotros necesitamos otro aumento de, en la renta? Eh, quieren que la minoría no tengamos que ir del estado de New York. Quieren que nosotros, eh, o haya una pandemia que el estado no pueda con ella, de hombres en la calle, de personas sin vivienda. Creo que este no es el momento. Creo que el momento es demasiado complejo y que los landos pueden sobrevivir y pueden hacer sus cosas. Por los abusos que yo hacen con nosotros de los arreglos, yo tengo el problema de salud porque mi landor tira toda la basura en la acera, la cual me está acosando a mí para que me mudé porque él, eso es lo que yo hice, las cosas. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Toshima Garner. Toshima, if you could unmute, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can't see you.
Ya la vemos y la escuchamos.
Okay. Hello, my name is Toshima Garner and I'm with Casa. I live at 359 East 163rd Street in Bronx, New York for fifteen years. My landlord is East 163 LLC. The COVID-19 pandemic has impacted many families' ability to pay rent. Health issues, risks restricted the potential to seek employment. In my complex alone, East 163 LLC, buildings 351 to 359, there is over a hundred HPD violations as well as multiple housing court proceedings for lack of services. Building Y, and it has only increased. The lack of services situates but not limited to the bare necessity of running hot water. Reference Housing Court Docket Number 13412/20. In conclusion, I'm asking that a freeze be put on rent increases so families, the tenants, can have an opportunity to recover from the economic financial burden COVID-19 pandemic has placed on us. Due to the already high rents, many of us are at the limit of rent subsidy and will push us out of those categories and into eviction. Also landlords should not be rewarded for the abandonment and lack of services during such a horrific time. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is, has phone number ending eight one six. I'm not sure who that is.
It's Kim.
Kim. Okay, Kim, you're welcome. If you could also give your last name, Kim, we'd love to hear from you.
Oh yes, my name is Kim Graffanino. I'm sorry, I only just joined fifteen minutes ago because... Um, thank you. So I'm calling because I think during these times to raise the rents will cause massive evictions. We're already one of the most expensive cities to live in and right now I live in a rent stabilized apartment for twenty-one years that is twenty-five percent above the market rate right now. And because of the law passed in 2019, my landlords won't decrease my rent because now if they even lower it just during these times, they have to keep it at that, which gives them no incentive in any way to decrease it. I think during these times we should consider a temporary freeze or even decreasing some of the rents that are above the market rate. I'm in a studio apartment with a mini fridge, three hundred and twenty-five square feet. I shouldn't be paying the amount of money that I do. I have absolutely no amenities. And I did have a good relationship with my landlord until now because it's really tough times and they don't want to, they told me that I can blame the city for that. So this is why I'm calling. I think we should really consider what we're going through, one of the worst economic times since the Great Depression. And we shouldn't be raising rents when rents are already so high, especially like I told you. It was calculated I'm spending between twenty-three to twenty-five percent above the market rate even in a rent stabilized apartment. And it just to me is unacceptable. Um, I just, I know that landlords have to pay the mortgage and everything like that, but they're going to actually get more from us if they give us an affordable rent right now during these times and then maybe reevaluate in the next, you know, year or two, once the pandemic is over and maybe job numbers are up.
Thank you.
And that's all I had to say. I'm sorry. It's, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Comfort Kumie. Um, you're muted. If you press star six, you'll unmute and we can hear you. Comfort, if you press star six, we can hear you. Yep, we're ready.
Hello.
Hello, we hear you.
Okay, um. My name is Comfort Kumie and I live in a stabilized apartment. I'm, my landlord is 1081, 1083 Sheridan, uh, reality. Uh, I am with Casa. I've been living there for like thirty years. Uh, at this point, all I'm gonna say in short is things are very, very hard for people. Nobody, no work, you can't pay rent. It's rough. To pay, uh, all this increased rent and increased lease, you know, as a retired person, your money is just a few little change. And every two minutes you think everything has changed. I'm talking about myself. Today, 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 one and a half years now, I don't have no fridge, no fridge. There's a hole in my bathroom, no repairs. As a whole, so I don't see why, uh, the government just keep giving these landlords all this money, money, MCI, what? They just put, um, you know, the stable self sheltering streets, you know, for people to see, just to see that they're doing work there. And as for some time they take it up, they don't do no repairs and just pocket the money. So can there, is there any way for them, for the government, RGB, to help? For government to say, studio is ten cities, three rooms is ten cities, three bedroom is this? Because these landlords are killing money.
Thank you for your testimony.
No more, uh, increase for rent, no lease increase, and we need a rent roll back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fausto Uraina de la Cruz. You're muted, Fausto, if you want to unmute.
Fausto tiene que activar su micrófono, por favor, si desea declarar la tecla del asterisco. Muy buenas noches a ustedes. Muy buen evento. Mi nombre es Fausto Uraina de la Cruz. Vivo en el 1201 University Avenue of Brown New York con mi esposa, mi hijo, su esposa, y mis tres pequeñas nietas. Estoy con casa. Pagar la renta en Nueva York nunca ha sido fácil, pero el precio de la renta en New York es muy alto. En mi caso personal, he sufrido la consecuencia de la gentrificación. Fui desplazado de mi apartamento en el 2016 en Manhattan. La pandemia y el COVID-19 han traído como consecuencia que muchas personas hayan tenido la situación de no pagar la renta. Estoy bajo un sistema de sexai. Hecho imposible por pagar y ayudar a mi hijo con quien me, que nos dio un apoyo para nosotros vivir con ellos. Ha sido muy difícil pagar renta. Esto por los gastos que superan su estado de entrada, comida, transporte, otro. Así que creo no es posible que la renta sea aumentada. Yo creo que debe ser congelada y que hayan más oportunidades de tener un apartamento de bajos, de baja renta y que no hayan tanto homele como dijo alguien en la calle. Así que muchísimas gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias señor.
Um, our next speaker I believe is Manti Kaba.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Yes, it's Manti Kaba.
Please testify. We can hear you.
Moi, moi, je peux pas parler en anglais.
Uh, okay, you're gonna, you're gonna testify in French?
We have interpreter.
How was supposed to be, is Hal with us? Hal Burgold is gonna testify with her.
Yeah. I can get him on, just give me a second.
Sounds good.
Hello?
Yes, hello. Just one moment, please.
Manti, we're getting Hal for you. One second.
Madame, attendez un instant s'il vous plaît. On va chercher un interprète en français.
Thank you.
Alden, a new skill, just... Um, could I, do you think it makes sense? Oh, is he on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. How do you want him to identify himself as staff?
How is he on? Is he? Is he an attendee right now or?
On the Zoom as an attendee. I'm assuming, yes.
Do you know what he's signed in as? I don't see Hal. Is he on the phone?
Oh geez, this is a little hard for me to do on the...
What's the last three digits, Shayla, of his phone number? Do you know?
David, if you'd like, if it's easier, I can, I can do it consecutively with her.
Okay, I think we could do that Shayla. Is that okay?
That's fine.
I trust Alden.
Madame, allez-y, si vous voulez bien, on va parler un petit peu. Vous allez, vous arrêtez après ça, je vais traduire ce que vous dites, d'accord? Madame, vous êtes là?
Okay, moi, mon problème?
Parlez, allez-y.
Mon problème c'est, le problème du rent.
So my problem is the rent issue. Allez-y, vous pouvez continuer si vous voulez.
Parce que, c'est mon frère qui m'a aidé à payer mon loyer et il ne travaillait plus.
So it's actually my brother that helps me pay the rent and unfortunately he's not working at the moment.
Maintenant, ils m'ont envoyé à la justice de payer ou bien qu'ils vont me mettre en dehors.
So at the moment, I'm actually being taken to, to housing court and I'm afraid that I'm going to be put out on the street.
Donc, je suis partie au court, ils m'ont donné un papier, je vais venir attendre à la maison à l'écoute. Mais jusqu'à présent, on m'a pas appelé encore.
So at the moment, um...
J'ai marché, marché avec les instructions pour continuer d'aider, impossible.
So it's impossible. So at the moment, my biggest fear is that I'm going to be evicted from my apartment. Um, the paperwork hasn't arrived at my home, but I'm afraid that I'm going to get there at some point and see it posted on my door.
Donc, je suis à la maison, je ne dors pas, j'ai peur de fermer pour que les gens ne ferment pas ma porte.
So of course I'm at home, I can't sleep at night because I'm afraid that, you know, I'm gonna wake up the next day and I'm going to be evicted.
Parce que j'ai fait sortir un peu de mes bagages là pour partir mettre ça au storage pour ne pas que j'ai eu ventes.
And of course, I'm also embarrassed by this entire situation. I'm trying to do the best that I can.
Parce que je suis malade, je marche pas, je marche avec un discrèlet.
And I'm also sick at the moment, um, and I know that I'm getting sicker by the moment.
Ça fait treize ans, je suis dans cet appartement-là.
I've been at this apartment now for three years, three years now.
C'est fini, treize. Treize.
Treize ans. I've been at this apartment now for thirteen years.
Bon, tous mes parents sont dans le milieu là. Je ne veux pas quitter ici, partir ailleurs.
And I don't want to leave, I don't want to leave my apartment. I don't want to go anywhere else.
Maintenant, il y a le souris chez moi ici. On dort même pas avec les chies.
And of course... Allez-y, Madame.
Il m'a pas, il m'a pas répondu.
Unfortunately, we can't even sleep in the apartment now because there are vermin in the apartment.
311, il est venu ici, le rat l'a cherché, les a cherché, les rats.
We even called 311 to see if they could come and inspect the premises.
Donc, ils ont dit qu'ils vont venir réparer, ils m'ont pas réparé.
So I'm waiting for them to come and make the repairs of my apartment.
Maintenant, là où je prépare, là tout est gâté.
And where I actually prepare my meals, everything is ruined because of course rodents and roaches.
C'est, c'est, c'est dingue là, tu peux pas regarder tellement que, on dirait que je suis un animal.
It's disgusting as a matter of fact. You can't even look at it. You would think that there are animals living in the apartment.
Donc, vraiment si ils pouvaient m'aider pour mon problème de rent là, ça serait plaisir parce que vraiment je n'avais pas dormi, j'ai peur.
So again, I'm very scared about the current situation. I can't really sleep at night. If there's any way that the RGB can help me with the situation, I would really appreciate it. Because of course there were, mm-hmm, there was an MCI that was also, that took place at the building and of course my apartment was not one of those repairs.
Thank you for your testimony.
Madame, malheureusement, on a terminé, mais merci beaucoup pour votre déclaration aujourd'hui. Merci beaucoup. Je vous en prie.
Our next speaker is Ana Galvez.
You need Spanish translation.
Hola, qué tal? Muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Ana Galvez. Vivo en el 295 East de la 149th Street. Esto es en el Bronx, New York. Y yo formo parte de casa. Solamente quiero decirles una cosa. Me da pena y vergüenza pensar que están siquiera, o sea que por su mente pase el querer subir los alquileres. Yo no sé que, de qué manera quieren saber que la gente estamos sufriendo. Tenemos miedo de ser desalojados. No solamente hablo por mí sino por toda mi comunidad. Yo soy inmigrante. Yo no tengo ningún tipo de ayuda. Y como quiera sigo luchando día a día, trabajando en las calles, vendiendo frutas, verdura, lo que sea. Y de verdad me da vergüenza pensar que ustedes piensen y crean que este problema no es real. Señores, estamos sufriendo, padeciendo por quedarnos en nuestro hogar. Yo tengo más de dieciséis años viviendo en este apartamento y no es posible que siquiera piensen en desalojarme. Lo único que les pido es que sean conscientes y que si el problema no se resuelve, no solamente tendrán viviendo en las calles a uno, ni a dos, ni a tres personas, a millones, las cuales nos vamos a manifestar para que sepan que esto es real. Muchísimas gracias por escucharme. Estoy triste y molesta a la vez porque ustedes sientan que el problema de un hogar no es real. Gracias por escuchar.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Aurelia Hernandez, Aurelia, if you unmute yourself and if you want to put on your camera, that'd be great.
Buenas noches, me, Aurelia Hernandez, vivo en el 1064 de Carroll Place. Tengo diecisiete a diecinueve años, perdón, viviendo en este apartamento. Estoy en una asociación de inquilinos con el apoyo de Casa. Con Casa hemos estado en una huelga de renta por la cancelación o un descuento de por lo menos el sin un cincuenta por ciento. La huelga se debe a que hay miles de personas sin trabajo y los que estamos trabajando no ganamos lo suficiente. Se nos ha cortado horas de trabajo. La otra razón de la huelga es por reparaciones en los apartamentos. Por esas razones mencionadas, caser, los caseros no deben aumentar la renta. En cuanto a lo económico, todo está caro, los precios están al doble, las cosas están al doble del precio y hay que comprar más cosas para protegernos del virus como máscaras, hand sanitizer, alcohol y también hay otros gastos como gastos médico. Hace unas cuantas semanas yo visité a la doctora de la vista y tuve que pagar trescientos dólares por por estos lentes. La hija mía necesitaba braces, yo tuve que pagar cuatro mil quinientos dólares con una tarjeta de crédito, ¿por qué? Porque no tenía dinero y esa es la vida de nosotros, de la masa pobre, los más pobres. Aquí tenemos que estar en deuda porque todo se va, la mayoría de lo que ganamos se va en la renta. Cuentas por pagar, por pagar, aparte de la renta, hay otras cuentas por pagar con Edison.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Permitirme.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Carlos. You're muted and your camera is not on if you want it to be on. Hello?
Hello?
Welcome.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we're ready to hear your testimony.
Señor, le escuchamos, puede declarar.
Okay, ah, mi nombre es Jean Carlos Ortiz, vivo en el 1050 de Carroll Place, apartamento 4K. Estoy aquí por mí y por todo lo que está viviendo este abuso. ¿Cómo es posible un aumento de renta donde todavía estamos en pandemia? Y todos estamos pasando dificultades para todos. En mi casa somos cuatro, incluyendo un niño de trece años y yo pago veinte ciento noventa y tres dólares por un apartamento de una habitación porque ellos eliminaron la sala para hacer una habitación, o sea, es un abuso. Y tenemos dificultades para las reparaciones, ellos anteriormente fueron a reparar pero todavía está, esta es la fecha que todavía la estufa lo fusiona, lo sirve, el técnico fue para repararla y dijo que había que reemplazar la estufa y la puerta frontal del apartamento, ellos la fueron a reparar y la dejaron igualita, lo sirve. He hecho porque ellos dicen que hay que pagarle para ellos reparar y desde el tiempo que renté mi apartamento pagaba vez por vez desde que empezó la pandemia, yo perdí mi trabajo en marzo de 2020 y de esa fecha la da sido igual, todo está acabado. Tenemos trabajo y lo trabajo que tenemos, a veces lo trabajamos ni ni la cuarenta horas para poder cubrir los gatos de de todo lo que debemos, ese es mi testimonio.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Mireya Vilma. Yes. Welcome.
Buenas noches.
Señora, le escuchamos, puede declarar.
Gracias, buenas noches, mi nombre es Mireya Vilma, soy miembro de Casa, vivo en el edificio 1749 Gran Concorde hace ocho años. En este momento mi familia y yo estamos pasando momentos difíciles, ya no tenía, yo tenía dos trabajos para pagar las rentas. Una era yo era homaten de mi hermana y la segunda un pactan de cinco horas. Con motivo del COVID-19, mi hermana se enfermó con el COVID, después le dio dos trombosis, hace cinco meses que está interna. Ahora ella está en silla de rueda, no puede caminar, ya ese trabajo lo perdí, a mí me dio el COVID pero no me dio tan mal. No duermo pensando cómo vamos a pagar la renta. No puedo pensar que en este momento están pensando aumentar la renta, ¿de dónde cabe eso? Que en tiempo de pandemia, porque la pandemia todavía no se ha ido, es que ustedes no piensan en la gente, no tienen corazón, no piensan el dolor de los demás. Muy bien, usted tiene su casa, lo pueden pagar, pero nosotros no podemos pagar la casa, ¿qué vamos a hacer? Si tenemos, si suben la la renta, es en la calle, van a tener más homeless en la calle y más gente haciendo maldad en la calle. Piense bien lo que van a hacer, piénselo mil veces en lo que van a hacer. Estoy llenando la aplicación para la ayuda para pagar el alquiler, todavía estoy asustado porque no sé si voy a calificar porque la primera ayuda que dieron no califiqué, vuelvo y repito y mil veces, no al aumento de de renta, no se puede. Buena noche y espero si es que tienen buenas noches porque nosotros no tenemos buenas noches mientras siguen pensando que van a subir la renta, bye.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Fanta Dumbia.
Yes, good evening everyone. My name Fanta Dumbia, I'm living 1060 Sheridan Avenue, apartment one D. Right now, I'm now working because COVID-19, so I don't have a job right now. My rent is higher, I cannot pay right now, so I need help, please.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, you're welcome.
I think our next speaker is Avagal Avilas. You're muted, Avagal.
Avigail Avilas, por favor, pueda encender su su micrófono, por favor.
You're muted and also your camera is not on if if you want to put on your camera.
Si quiere encender señora su cámara y también el micrófono, no le vemos y no le escuchamos asterisco seis para encender su micrófono.
Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, my name is Avigail Avilas. My husband and I are rent stability tenants at 4205 Leighton Street, which is in Elmhurst, New York. As you can see from my Zoom background, this is the view from my window in my apartment. This is Elmhurst Hospital and if you have been reading the news at all in the last year, you would know that Elmhurst Hospital was the epicenter of the epicenter. And again, this is right across my window. So you can imagine the constant sirens of ambulances that I would hear and that I have been hearing in the last year. And with every ambulance, I would wonder which one of my neighbors is dying tonight. And as you know, many of my neighbors died, I lost family members and I lost friends. And that's the reality of of living in the epicenter of COVID-19. At one point, there was frozen like freezer trucks outside of my window, right? So like the bodies of my neighbors were right outside my window, right? Like that is the reality of the COVID-19 pandemic in my community, right? And Elmhurst and Corona face deep, deep rent burdens, right? And because of deep rent burdens, we live overcrowded with multiple families per apartment. And because of that overcrowdiness is why we had the most deaths. We are the most risk of eviction and even now we are the least vaccinated. If my community cannot even afford to take a day off of work to get vaccinated, I promise you they cannot take a, they cannot afford any rent increase. I I am unemployed, like many of my other neighbors and my family members. And my community is majority majority black, brown, working class and immigrant families. So any rent increase will directly lead to displacement and when my community is, will die. Rent increases have disproportionate racial impacts, so we need a rent rollback for immigrant and racial justice.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, I'm not sure if it's pronounced Dolce or Dulce Ventura.
Hi, yeah, it's pronounced Dulce.
Dulce, welcome, we look forward to your testimony.
Thank you. So my name is Dulce, I live in the Bronx. I just wanted to come here and share my thoughts. I'm a hundred percent against raising the rent this year. After everything so so many of us have experienced, it's been difficult for many of us financially to sustain ourselves and our family. Increasing the rent will just make it even harder for us to catch up. I've been lucky enough not to have lost income during this crisis, but with two kids in the house doing remote learning and being home alone all day is is very difficult because we have to buy extra food, Con Ed is piling up. So it is a lot of other expenses that we have. We've also had family laws and that's expensive. Um, and other things. Um, the expenses have literally tripled for us and for and for many of us.
John, give me a second please. Um, right now, I'm hoping to qualify for this rent relief. Um, I've actually been without a refrigerator for a month because the landlord refuses to give us a new rent, a new refrigerator or even fix the one we have because we have missing rent. So I really hope that this year you guys don't vote to increase the rent, it's it's not fair for a lot of us, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. My my understanding from the RGB staff is that they've identified everyone who registered from the list of attendees and they have no more registered speakers, Andrew, I'm getting that right, correct?
No, there there's at least one person on the phone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I might have an update in a couple of minutes. We can go to Quintine Fenner. Quintine, you can talk if you unmute yourself, star six.
Quintine, if you press star six, we can hear you. Yeah, I think.
I'm here, I'm, I apologize, I'm here now.
Great, we got you.
All right, thank you. Well, let me say good evening and I'm so glad that I'm able to get on and quickly, hopefully I can say this within within two minutes. I can relate closely with every tenant that has spoken tonight, especially the gentleman, I believe he has two children who practically had tears in his eyes and cried because can't afford tuition, he can't afford rent. And that's the same here, I'm African American, seventy-one-year-old retiree and I never thought that I'd see the day that I would have to cut my medication. I never thought I would see the day that I would I would have to choose whether to buy food, pay rent or go ahead on and pay for my medication. Yes, I have Medicaid, but it does not cover it all. I've been on medicine, had a brain bleed, the medication was six hundred dollars, but Medicaid would not pay for it. I want to address another, a small, I believe, landlord who she said there are many applications that we can or programs we can apply for, but bear in mind a lot of these programs are predicated on the amount of income that you have. And it's a shame that in America, if you're making forty thousand dollars, they would tell you that that is too much. So I want to address her and let her know that yes, there are programs out there, but you have to be in poverty. You have to be practically destitute in order to apply for it. I have three things left in my life, I have prayer, I have a vote and I have my voice and my and my have hope too. And I hope that those politicians that spoke tonight that were in front of their doors, yes, fight to reduce the rent. I'm opposed to these rent increases. My prayer is that everyone on the rent guidelines board, the politicians and the landlords who pay these politicians behind closed doors and the politicians, some of them will not admit it. My hope is that everyone will get together, that the city council will roll back property taxes so that we can afford to do what is necessary to live as human beings. And I thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. I think we have Letitia Martin.
Yes.
Welcome.
Bienvenidos.
Hi, my name is Letitia Martin and.
Hi, Letitia Martin.
Hi, Letitia Martin, yeah.
Welcome.
Letitia Martin?
No, Martin.
On the main line.
Okay, um, I heard a lot of the voices and I agree with so many of them. One of them is that it shouldn't even result to what we're doing right now. And another one is the the voice of all women and men of any ethnic background should be heard, not just some of them, all all of them. My name is Letitia Martin and my husband's name is William Martin. We reside after forty years and over, nine fifty with the Crest Avenue in the Bronx. And we've been there for a very long time with many, many different landlords. But my 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 main reason for being on right now is because we both have fixed incomes and but our 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 rent is not fixed, we just signed a one-year lease and we hardly can hardly pay that. I don't, I do realize that there are lots of agencies that could help us because we're over the age, I just found that out. But I still feel that it should, you should vote for the fact that the landlord should not get anything because none of them are listening to us now, they're probably in their bed sleeping somewhere, not caring about what the average person that pays rent for them is doing. I grew up knowing that rent come first, I grew up that way. So because of the little pension we have and stimulus that helped us, we were able to pay our rent. We really, you know, are thankful for that. But what's gonna happen, you know, when one of the pensions is gone, which will be very soon? I don't know, you know, I hopefully and pray to everyone here, my heart goes to everyone, is that things will get better, you know? But like, shouldn't, this shouldn't be happening right now, this is America, as someone have brought out. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and testimony.
David, I have some Judith Marshall on the phone.
Great.
Judith, you can speak if you press star six to unmute yourself.
Judith, you have to press star six so that we can hear you. Yep, we can, I think we hear you now, go ahead.
Good evening and I apologize for my earlier, you know, not being able to press my name.
No worries.
My name is Judith Marshall, I'm a retired senior, I reside at thirteen ten Sheridan Avenue for twenty-seven years. I am a Casa member. My landlord is considered one of the worst. Here's a few reasons why we we are asking for a rent rollback. In the winter, my apartment is extremely cold, just a small amount of heat. No repairs are being done, you cannot reach the landlord, noticing the lobby instructing you to direct all repairs to Super. At present, our Super is not around. Note on lobby, second notice, Super will not be available until from June the first to June the twenty-eighth. I tried to reach in the replacement Super and I couldn't reach him. I have problems with my bathroom, I can't flush my toilet, some problem with the the handle on the tank. So I have to draw water from the from the faucet and flush the toilet. I mean, this is, this is unbelievable, unbelievable, unbelievable. I left two messages, no call has been returned. Now, what's the problem, that a rent increase? Oh, I don't think that's possible. On the twentieth of each month, the landlord sticks a rent receipt under your door. What about your tenants during the winter when we are freezing? You are comfort, you are comfortable in your fancy house in Riverdale. I was there a few, a few years back when we visited you begging you to do repairs. I am tired of all the little mice running around, it's, it is disgusting, please clean the building. How would you feel if one of your family was? How would you feel if one of your family was living under these conditions? We are asking for a rent. Not an increase. Ladies and gentlemen on the Rent Guideline Board, please hear our cry. Give us a rent rollback.
Thank you for your testimony.
Landlords, you can apply for the hardship relief. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you.
David, I just promoted Patria de Jesus. She's gonna be speaking in Spanish.
Okay. Could someone ask Patria to?
Señora Patria, soy la traductora. Por favor, active su micrófono. Usted le puede dar la tecla del asterisco y el número seis. Así puede activar su micrófono, y si quiere, puede prender su cámara.
Okay. Me pueden ver?
Sí, señora, la podemos ver.
Oh, sí. Mi nombre es Patria de Jesús García. Vivo en el 950 de Woody Crest. Y mi queja es que desde 2012, yo estaba pagaba $1,500 hasta el momento ahora. Ya estoy en 1904, y no es posible, yo siendo una madre soltera, que quieran ahora aumentar más la renta sabiendo que en la pandemia tuvimos que reducirlo trabajo porque tenemos los niños aquí en la casa. Entonces, aparte de eso, el building tiene demasiado problema. Uno presenta su queja, mandan el super, empieza arreglando, y luego deja la cosa a media, y tenemos mucha cucaracha, muchos ratones. En fin, tenemos bastante problema en este building completamente. Yo le pido, por favor, que se conduelan de lo más pobre, de lo más necesitado, y que, por favor, freeze the renta si puede. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias.
I think, Danielle, are we opening this up to unregistered speakers at this point?
Yes, at this point, if you have registered and you're here, we apologize, but we can't find you because your Zoom name might be different, your phone number might be different. One person who's on the phone has their caller ID blocked. So what we're gonna do is we're just gonna open it up. If you could, if you're on the phone and you'd like to speak and you haven't spoken yet, please press star nine, and we'll get this translated into Spanish in a minute. And if you're on video, there's a function to raise your hand. And if your hand is raised, then we're gonna call on you regardless of whether you were pre-registered and we didn't hear from you, or you were not registered. So if we could get that translated into Spanish, I would appreciate it.
Entonces, señores, ya hemos terminado la lista de las personas que se inscribieron para hablar. Entonces, si no hemos llamado su nombre, es muy posible que su nombre o número telefónico no es el mismo que se utilizó cuando ustedes inscribió. Entonces, y hay una persona que tiene el caller ID, la identificación de llamador, bloqueado. Entonces, para cambiar esto, por favor, dale la tecla estrella o asterisco y el número nueve. Y también, para las personas que están compareciendo por video, tienen la posibilidad de levantar la mano con el símbolo. Entonces, simplemente dale ahí, y podemos verlo.
Yeah. If we could also, just one more thing, Liz, except I don't have the numbers handy. I'm not sure if anybody is listening to the other hearing on the telephone in Spanish. They're not gonna be able to speak if they're over there. They need to come over here. Brian or someone, can you just read off this meeting ID and the telephone number they need to call if they're on the telephone to come into this meeting? And the passcode, Brian, do you have that?
I believe there was one person who was on throughout the whole meeting. I'll check. Let's see if they're still there.
If you're on the other hearing listening, and you do want to speak, raise your hand, and then we'll give out the information.
Si usted está en la otra sección y está escuchando y quiere hablar, simplemente levante la mano y vamos a llamarlos.
I think we could just get started promoting people in the order that their hand are raised. If you could, please say your name when you are allowed to speak, so we can mark it for the record. Thank you.
Entonces, ya vamos a empezar a llamar personas para que hablen. Cuando lo llamamos a usted, por favor, diga su nombre y apellido para poder anotar su nombre y su comparecencia aquí hoy día. Gracias.
I think we have Anthony Rome. Welcome.
Oh, hello. Yes, hello, could you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you and we can see you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, well, my name is Darrel Randu. I don't know, I'm sorry for showing up as Anthony Rome. That's my username for another email. So, but my name is Darrel Randu, and I live at 944 Morrissey Avenue, Bethel Stavison, Brooklyn. And I lived there for 23 years. I love living in my neighborhood because I'm close to my family. It has convenient shopping locations, and especially because it's very close to my doctor's office, which I have to frequently visit. I am currently not working due to escalating health issues and extreme hardship related to the coronavirus pandemic. And I'm on a very tight budget due to limited savings. And as my savings decrease, I find myself struggling to find new ways to cut back on spending so I can dedicate as much of my money as possible to rent. I sometimes have to sacrifice food, I'm using the train, and all leisurely entertainment. And so the slightest percent rent increase would have a devastating effect on my savings and my ability to stay in my home and pay for my utilities. Over half of rent-stabilized tenants pay more than 30% of their income to rent. This means that they are rent burden according to the Office of Housing and Urban Development. From 2018 to 2019, landlords' net operating income grew to 2.9%. The 14th increase in the last 15 years. The average monthly un-audited NOI residential-only property citywide was $499 per unit in 2019. That is directly from the Rent Guidelines Board report. That is a net operating income of $499 per unit per month. I would just pray that you guys can help us in not raise the rent because we are struggling, especially due to this pandemic. So please do not cause a rent increase.
Thank you so much. If the person with the phone number ending 515 can press star six and give us their name, we'd appreciate it.
Si la persona con número telefónico que termina 515, por favor, dale la tecla del asterisco y el número seis para activar el micrófono y decirnos su nombre y apellido. Gracias.
Danielle, maybe worth promoting, you know, one, two, or three people just as we work through the technical difficulties. Call-in user one, I don't have a phone number for you. I don't know if you see yourself as call-in user one, but if you could press star six?
I think that's Ramon Catala.
Okay, if they could press star six. Yep, you can go ahead. Who is it, Sheila?
Ramon.
Ramon, can you, you have two minutes.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Ramon Catala. Vivo en el 1085 de Comino Avino Ginebra. Quiero recordarle a la junta que antes de llegar a esta enfermedad, en los últimos cuatro, cinco años, ya muchos inquilinos le han perdido sus viviendas y trabajando. Vivían en shelters porque no podían pagar los aumentos de renta que bajaron demasiado de alto. Ahora ha sido una pesadilla para todos con esta enfermedad, donde todos han perdido, especialmente los inquilinos. Que no solamente han perdido sus trabajos, han perdido su jahorro. Las personas que han tenido ganancias han sido los caseros, ganancias millonarias, y sus edificios están intactos. Por eso no podemos permitir, les pido a la junta que no den otro aumento más de renta para no haber más gente desalojada. Te lo digo. Buenas noches.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
515, you need to lower whatever you're watching so that we don't get the feedback.
515, you can speak now. It's your turn to testify.
La persona con número telefónico cinco, que termina 515, usted puede hablar ahora. Es su turno para testificar.
We're getting a little feedback. Do you have two things listening to the hearing at the same time?
Hay mucho estático al fondo. Usted está escuchando o utilizando dos aparatos electrónicos a la misma vez?
515, I think I'm gonna have to mute you because of your feedback, but if you could figure that out? Okay, that's great. Thanks. If you could figure out the feedback, then you're welcome to testify. 182, if you wanna unmute yourself, star six, we can hear your testimony?
Número telefónico que termina 182, por favor, dale la tecla del asterisco y el número seis, y así podemos escuchar su testimonio. Gracias.
And Danielle, maybe promote some, one or two more people as we, so we could.
And just, folks, that if you are promoted, you have to accept in order to become a panelist. So if you don't, you'll just stay on in the attendee, and we won't be able to hear you.
So I think Angelica Rojas, we can listen to you if you can unmute? Welcome.
Buenas noches a todos, miembros del comité. A mí me gustaría testificar el día de hoy y dar mi testimonio por qué no deberían de dar aumento en la renta. El año pasado, me quedé sin trabajo. Solamente trabajé tres meses. Y este año estoy trabajando solamente un día. Cuando recién empecé a trabajar, me infecte de COVID. Estaba muy enferma y no tengo servicio médico. La renta sigue aumentando. El casero ya me mandó dos cartas de mandándome maracorte. Y el problema es que el casero no arregla el departamento. El edificio, mi techo se inundó, se mojó, se me dañaron mis muebles. Tuve que botarlos. Él tuvo la disfachatez de no dar servicios básicos como calefacción, agua caliente durante la pandemia mientras estábamos encerrados. So, yo creo que sería inhumano el que ustedes aumentaran la renta en este momento. Este ha sido un... Me ha dañado emocionalmente, físicamente. Es un momento difícil para mí, para mis hijos, para mi madre. Y no vea justo que le den un aumento a la renta, y es como premiar a los caseros cuando no dan servicios básicos. Gracias por escucharme, este... Y disculpen, me puse un poco emocional.
No problem at all. Thank you for your testimony.
Muchas gracias.
I'm sorry, I think I'm having trouble. Pedro testifying next, perhaps? Ending five, Pedro, if you could unmute and give us your full name, please? And could that be translated to Spanish?
Señor Pedro, por favor, active su micrófono, el asterisco número seis, y cuando empiece a hablar, por favor, díganos su nombre y apellido. Gracias.
So I'm gonna ask either, oh, Pedro or a person ending phone number 515. If you could unmute yourself with a 515 by pressing star six? Yes, 515, we can hear you. Could you tell us your name?
Hi, my name is Laura Govan, and I'm with CASA.
Welcome.
Should I continue?
Yeah, you know, we have some feedback, but why don't you testify? We can hear you over the feedback.
Okay. I've lived at 1504 Sheridan Avenue for 33 years. Present landlord is 1504 Sheridan LLC Chestnut Holding Company. Based on information and belief, the landlord has not accepted money, and I have a housing court case pending to be heard in the Bronx Housing Court. I want to point out that many people are affected by the COVID-19 and couldn't afford to pay rent. Landlords saw an increase in the net operating for 14 consecutive years. Many landlords received tax exemptions and credits in return for providing affordable housing. Landlords who are financially struggling, they filed a hardship application with DHER, and it was reported that only three applications are currently processed. Meanwhile, the majority of the tenants who applied for rent relief in 2020 has been rejected and based on Rent Guidelines Board own data shows that two years of rent fees did not impact landlord's net operating income at all and did not produce any crisis for corporate landlords. Homelessness increased for the 13th consecutive year in 2020. And more than 1.4 million New Yorkers are behind in rent, and more than 220,000 cases have been filed in the housing court with the largest concentration in the Bronx. And again, I say, Rent Guideline Board's own data shows that two years of rent fees did not impact landlord's net operating income at all and did not produce any crisis for the landlord. Therefore, you should roll back the rent, freeze the rent. And I conclude my testimony.
Thank you so much. And Pedro, I saw that you had unmuted. You certainly can go next. And let me just say before you start, the person with phone ending 182 and the person with phone ending 515, if you press star six, you can unmute yourself and speak after Pedro. And maybe we'll say it in Spanish?
Señor Pedro, un momento, por favor, un momento, por favor. Antes de que usted hable, las personas con números telefónicos que terminan 182 y 515, tenemos una persona que va a hablar ahora, pero ustedes son los siguientes, por favor. Para activar sus micrófonos, le pueden dar a la tecla del asterisco y el número seis. Gracias.
Was 515 the person who just spoke, though?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. Yes, so, okay.
Yeah, so it's just 182.
Let's do Pedro, and then we'll do 182 if they can unmute by pressing star six.
Sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Pedro Ortiz. Entrené al 1501 de Cleveland, Bronx, New York. Mi inquietud es la siguiente manera. Estamos ahora mismo en un tiempo de conciencia. Una pandemia que nos ha dado muy duro a la ciudad de Nueva York y al mundo entero. Pero nosotros, los newyorkinos, tenemos que apoyar uno con otro porque la renta está demasiado alta. Los holandores, con respeto, han hecho demasiado dinero. Y cuando subieron las rentas en los otros gobiernos aquí en la ciudad de Nueva York, ellos subieron. Ahora mismo, en esta situación que hay, deberían de bajar las rentas, por lo menos $1,000, $900. Porque cuando ellos construyeron todos esos apartamentos que han hecho nuevos y todo ese edificio nuevo, el chigrat estaba a $3.50, a $4. La mano de obra la pagaron a otros 50 a la hora, y ese tipo de situaciones. Ahora mismo, ellos han hecho demasiado millones, y necesitamos que tengan conciencia y que ellos, por lo menos, bajen renta, no suban, no subir la renta porque hay muchas personas pobres, y este mundo, Dios lo hizo para que todos vivamos y tomamos bien aquí. Y tenemos que ayudarnos uno con otro. Porque solamente un grupo que se haga rico y pueda llevar la comida a la mesa. A los niños pobres necesitan comer, la persona mayor también. Y todas estas personas que no tengan conciencia, le van a tener que rendir cuenta a Dios. Porque nadie mienta a Dios. Dios es el que tiene el control de todo aquí en la tierra. Y sin él no somos nadie, y de ello le van a rendir cuenta a Dios. Buena noche.
Thank you for your testimony. Phone number ending 182, if you could press star six, then we can hear your testimony?
La persona con número telefónico... La persona con número telefónico que termina uno ocho dos, le puede dar a la tecla de las que, al, el, la tecla del asterisco y el número seis y podemos escuchar su testimonio.
Uh, I see someone, um, I, uh, there's no name. If you can unmute yourself, oh, one eight two, why don't you go first and then the other person could go second?
La persona con número telefónico que termina uno ocho dos, por favor, empieza a hablar y después va ahí la siguiente persona.
Sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Jordaliza Lora, del doce diez de Klea Avenue. Tengo tres años viviendo aquí. Eh, tenía dos trabajos, perdí uno en pandemia, me quedé con uno, el cual no me daba para sostenernos. Tenía un cuarto rentado, la persona se fue, pues no tenía trabajo. Mi padre falleció, tuvimos que sepultarlo, lo poco que teníamos lo gastamos ahí. Esto no ha sido nada fácil, comida para, no tenemos ocupado el alimento. Eh, queremos que cancelen la renta y que no haya aumento. Eh, también tenemos mucha necesidad en nuestro edificio y hasta un incendio hubo que todavía hay daños, por lo cual hay resolver. Estamos agradecidos de ustedes por la atención que se han puesto. Esperamos que las autoridades mayores, pues, nos pongan atención, a ver lo que puedan hacer con nosotros. Muy agradecida, buena noche, muchas gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, for the gentleman who has a long string of numbers and letters, uh, if, if you know who I'm talking to, um, if you could unmute yourself where we see you, but we don't hear you. Uh, but you uh can testify.
Pero puede declarar. Asterisco seis, caballero, dos, seis, nueve, cuatro.
Sheila, you wouldn't happen to know who this uh person is?
I did not recognize him, but I will text to see if anyone does.
He may not know that his name is so crazy. The gentleman sitting in a black chair with a TV behind his.
Lorenzo? Ah, Lorenzo, no lo reconocía. Tiene que sacarse de mute usted. No lo oimos.
Caballero, tiene que activar su micrófono, por favor, presione el asterisco y el número seis. De lo contrario, no lo escuchamos. Ya le podemos, puede hablar, puede declarar.
Ay, sí, gracias. Mi nombre es Lorenzo Fermín. Vivo en el catorce ochenta y cinco de McCune Road. Vivo en este edificio por más de veinte años con mi familia, mi hijo y mi esposa. Sí, este es uno de los buildings que menos reparaciones se le hace. El casero no repara en tiempo, en tiempos regulares, menos en tiempo de pandemia. Eh, queremos, por favor, que se toquen el corazón y no le den más aumento de renta a los landlords ya que ellos no han perdido dinero porque la renta siempre se, hay, hay que pagarla y siempre se le paga. El inquilino tiene que hacer lo que sea para pagar sus rentas. Tiene que dejar de comer, tiene que dejar de, de vestirse, dejar de, de comprarse una, un pantalón o una camisa para ir a su trabajo. Ya que los trabajos no tampoco están eh, bueno, no hay trabajo para lo, para la mayoría de la gente. Entonces, por favor, tóquense el corazón y no, no arrasen otra vez como nos arrasó el Covid diecinueve. Porque Covid diecinueve nos dejó con mucha pérdida, pérdida familiares, pérdida de dinero, pérdida de toda clase. So, no queremos otro aumento de renta que no, que no aplaste como si fuera un tsunami. No, no aumento de renta porque no se lo merecen. No arreglaban en tiempos regulares, menos arreglan en tiempo de pandemia. Y están esperando que se reabra todo para comenzar a sacar la persona de su apartamento. Ya que ellos saben que el, el ingreso que tenían no lo tienen hasta ahora, a esta fecha. So, por favor, tóquense el corazón y no le den más aumento de renta a los landlords. Gracias.
Thank you for your testimony. Danielle, do we have anyone else?
Not that I'm aware of. This is your last chance to speak. If you'd like to raise your hand, you can use that function on video in Zoom. It says raise hand. If you're on the telephone, you haven't spoken already, you can press star six. We have a couple new people who have raised their hands.
Oh, there, I know.
Esta será su última oportunidad, por favor, de declarar si, si así lo desea. Si están en Zoom, por favor, use la función que está abajo en la barra inferior que dice raise hand, o sea, levantar la mano. Y si están en el teléfono, por favor, activen el audio al presionar el asterisco y el número seis.
Antonio Franco, uh, please, you have a, your, your turn to testify.
Okay, okay. Oh, thank you so much. And good evening everyone. And uh, yeah, I'm here to testify or to, to say that we shouldn't have a, a raise in, in rent. Uh, this pandemic, as I think lots of people have mentioned, has been a tragedy, a world tragedy. It's not only hitting New York, it's hitting lots of people around the world. And uh, right now discussing an increase in rent is really something that shouldn't be happening. Uh, we should be worried about uh, giving food to our families. We should be worried about getting medicine for, for those who need medicines. We should be worried about uh, getting jobs because many people have, have lost their jobs. So increases in whatever it is, in housing, in transportation, in uh, in anything, those things shouldn't be happening. I think the decision is very easy. We mustn't uh, get an increase in our rents, in our housing. Before this pandemic, there was already a, a housing crisis. So that problem is not going to be solved in a very long time. I, I think we all understand that. And an increase in rent is only going to make more difficult to, to solve that situation. So yes, in my opinion, and because of all the problems I've seen with my neighbors, with myself, with my own situation, I see that it is impossible to have a raise. And uh, yeah, that's my opinion.
Thank you for your testimony. Maria Two Diallo, I think is gonna be next. Maria Two, if you could unmute yourself? And if you wanna put your camera on, we'd welcome that too.
Okay, can I speak without camera?
Certainly, you certainly can. We're ready to hear your testimony.
Will you hear me? Uh, good evening. My name is Maria Two Diallo. I am with CASA. I live, I lived at ten sixty Sheridan Avenue since uh, two twenty fourteen, till now. My landlord is a ten forty eight, ten sixty four Sheridan Investor LLC. I am here tonight to testify for rent rollback because I believe that the rent should never be increasing at this price time. Before even think about increasing rent, you should take a look, look at, for, about people living conditions through the pandemic. I am a single mother with nine years, years of girl. I am very worried about being evicted. Uh, you, I please the rent guide people to consider all people, all residents, citizens living in New York City. Think about them, how, when they increasing rent, how gonna be more, more affected. We've been affected already and increasing rent is, is not a solution for uh, people. Like uh, no income coming, nobody, no help, we don't know where to go now. So please, um, take the consideration for all of people, listen to people, listen to your people. You guys supposed to stand up for all uh, raised in New York City resident people, not to increase the rent. But you, the one gave opportunity to landlord to keep asking for increasing rent. Because they can ask for you to increase rent, but you have, you the one has to make a decision. So please, this time, this moment, we should even don't think about increasing rent. So I'm, I'm against the increasing rent. I am here to roll back. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I see that we have Sandra Mitchell.
Thank you so very much for this space for us to testify. Thank you so very much. I appreciate it immensely. Um, again, my name is Chaplain Sandra Mitchell. I am a woman of faith and I'm making my petition for my community, for people in my building and for those who are suffering with disabilities and mental health issues as, as I am a mental health advocate and counselor for no rent increase, zero rent increase, and asking for a rent rollback. Um, I am a member of CASA and I'm also a member and tenant leader of the Northwest Bronx Community Coalition. I live in the Fordham Hills section of the Bronx. Um, coming out of the shelter after losing my apartment in Riverdale due to losing my job. I am still recuperating from twenty thirteen. I was already in a crisis before the pandemic and raising rents during the pandemic and another strand is coming, it would be modern day genocide. And so I'm asking, I am pleading, I'm humbly pleading before God Almighty to the Rent Guidelines Board for zero rent increase and a rent rollback. Thank you so very much for your attention and time.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, Danielle, um, any, anyone else?
Uh, last chance, press star six to raise your hand on the phone. Use the raise hand function if you're watching on video. If we don't have any takers, uh, we're gonna adjourn this meeting.
Es la última, última oportunidad para que puedan declarar. Les pedimos que de nuevo, si están acá en Zoom, por favor, use la función para levantar la mano que se encuentra en la barra inferior del Zoom y si están en el teléfono pueden activar el teléfono con eh, asterisco número seis. Y si no tenemos más declarantes, entonces eh, vamos a terminar con esta, con esta bienza.
Asterisco número nueve, levantar la mano.
So, just as, as we, it seems like we're wrapping up. Um, I, I may have been remiss in not thanking Liz Figueroa, Ovin Cava and Roxy Chang um, at the end of our last hearing. But thanks so much for the translation and for the um, informal translation that some others have provided. But um, it's so important to the work that we do that we um, are able to work with you. And thank you for, for taking such good care of our speakers and the board. Um, we're all grateful. Um, and again, uh, thank you to our board members who really have uh, spent quite a bit of time on these hearings. We've been able to hear everyone who's wanted to speak, which is a great thing, something we committed to do. Uh, so thank you all for that. And as always, um, thanks to Andrew and Brian and Danielle and Charmaine for uh, running a very seamless uh, virtual hearing, even though this is a pretty new thing, not just for us, but, but for the people who have come to testify before us today. So, so thanks to all and um, to all, good night.
Wait, uh, before we go.
Yes, sorry, Andrew, always.
First of all, Ovin, I think you should double your hourly rate. All of a sudden, you're speaking French. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
You're very welcome.
Secondly, just a reminder that for the proposed language that you want to present, um, if you have a proposal that you want, it wants to be considered at the final vote, um, we will need those in tomorrow. But um, we ask they are by two P M. So if you want to make a proposal, um, the final language should be in on tomorrow at two P M. Thank you. If you have any questions about it, please don't hesitate, reach out.
Andrew, do you wanna just um, maybe give the phone number real quick if people wanna call in and give testimony by midnight tonight?
Sure, sure. And uh, so if you would like to call in testimony, uh, audio testimony, nine two nine, two five six, five four seven two. If you go to our website, um, nyc.gov backslash R G B, there is a link there under quick links where you can actually submit video testimony as well. We'll keep that up. The deadline is the idea that that's, that's the deadline to get the board members. Um, so we legally know that we can get that to them, but we'll leave that open. You know, in the morning tomorrow as well, if people wanna submit, that's fine. But we, we put the deadline of today so that we can actually um, make sure that we can get it to everybody. But if people still wanna leave uh, throughout the morning tomorrow, that will be, that will be open, so.
Andrew, would you like that interpreted?
Sure.
Thank you.
Damas y caballeros, les recordamos que si desean dejar declaraciones, eh, no será, el plazo no vencerá esta noche, tendrán hasta mañana. Eh, prácticamente por la mañana, casi al mediodía para hacerlo. El número de teléfono donde pueden dejar una declaración por audio es el nueve dos nueve dos cinco seis cinco cuatro siete dos. De nuevo, es el nueve dos nueve dos cinco seis cinco cuatro siete dos. Y ahí podrán dejar su declaración en forma de audio, pero también podrán ir a nuestro sitio web donde podrán encontrar enlaces que les explicarán cómo dejar un video, una declaración en forma de video si desean. Y recuerden, si no lo pueden hacer esta noche, antes de la medianoche, lo podrán hacer por la mañana, mañana. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you. Um, Andrew, uh, we need a, a motion to adjourn for a hearing, am I right?
We did.
Andrew, what time is the deadline for the, for the language? You say two P M?
Two P M tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
And the email has everything that you need on it. And that at some point during the, um, we will email all, all the polls that we get, we'll email to the board members tomorrow. Um, and then at some point they'll be on the website tomorrow as well. The public can view them.
Tendrán hasta las dos de la tarde mañana para entregar esa declaración, por favor, y todas las instrucciones eh, con lo que tienen que hacer aparecerán en nuestra página web. Muchas gracias.
All right, Andrew, are you ready? All right, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Christian makes a motion. Do I have a second? Alex has a second. Robert, you missed your opportunity. Just a second. Thank you all and I will talk to you all soon. Have a good night to everyone listening.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.